February 22nd, 2017, meeting of the City Council. City Clerk, can I, wait, nope. First, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led today by Congressman Mike Thompson, Representative Rebecca Hermosillo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Aggermonte.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Mayor Hunley.
Here.
Thank you.
City Attorney, can we have a report out on our closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council did meet in closed session with respect to the items that are posted on the agenda. It took no action requiring reporting out at this time.
Moving on to public comment, can I have a show of hands of who's here for public comment and not here for Item 7C regarding the immigration resolution? All right. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the City Council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council consideration. Upon being acknowledged, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone. Begin by stating and spelling your name. And while someone's speaking, someone else can hang out by the door so that we can keep this moving because we have a lot of people that want to talk tonight. So, public comment is open.
Hello, City Council, Mayor Hunley. I'm representing, I'm Bill Blum, B-L-U-M, a general manager at MacArthur Place Hotel, and I'm representing six hotel owners and general managers here in Sonoma with a letter that we've submitted to the City Council, and I'd like to read that to you now. Dear Sonoma City Council, as hotel owners and general managers in the city of Sonoma, we value our partnership with the city and are supportive of the goals of the City Council to continue to improve the quality of life here in Sonoma. We agree the quality of life is very important to our community, and with the loss of redevelopment funds, it's become more challenging to find resources to achieve your goals. With that in mind, as you begin the budget process, we hoteliers would like to support a City Council initiative that would raise the transient occupancy tax from 10% to 12% to assist in quality of life efforts such as affordable housing, infrastructure improvements, parks, and other projects that make Sonoma such a unique place to live. By increasing the TOT to 12%, plus the existing 2% Tourism Improvement District assessment, the city of Sonoma's collections would be at 14%, which would put us on par with the newly raised Sonoma County TOT and Napa Valley. To this end, we do not foresee a potential increase to have any adverse effects on our business. Thank you for your partnership as we work together to have a positive impact on the quality of life in Sonoma. Thank you.
My name is Johnny Westom. I'm the Executive Director of the Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau. My last name is W-E-S-T-O-M, and our address is at 453 First Street East over here on the Plaza. Just in addition to what Bill had just mentioned on behalf of the hoteliers, the Visitors Bureau aims to be good community stewards and partners with the city. We value our current relationship and only wish to expand on it. With the addition of our new city manager, it's been a wonderful transition. We valued Carol, and now we're valuing Kathy very much. So, we do support what Bill was just speaking on, and if there's any way we could help out, or if there's anything that we can do on behalf of that, we'd be more than happy to assist you. Additionally, in the future, we'd like to do more presentations to City Council so that we can bring you up to speed on what we're doing as a Visitors Bureau, and also the efforts that we're doing on behalf of this destination that we love so much. So, thank you again.
Chris Petlock, 426 Napa Road, Sonoma. Good evening, Councilmembers. A few weeks ago, I was reviewing a report from North Marin Water District, which compares various municipality water rates. They do it in an effort to justify their rates. In looking at this list, I was concerned at Sonoma's place on this list. So, I asked our City Council members and the city manager about this, and was told that Public Works would respond. My curiosity was piqued, so I decided to dig a little deeper and would like to report to you what I found. Sonoma water ratepayers pay greater than 20% more per gallon of water in using the same volume of water as other municipalities in Sonoma County who receive the majority of the water from the Sonoma County Water District. So, I was wondering why, what's different? So, I dug into this and looked at the latest years of audited financial statements as they're available on their respective websites, and found most of the expenses are similar by revenue, except for transfers out from the Water Enterprise Fund to other funds. Real quickly, Petaluma pays 20% less per gallon of water, and no transfers out of the water fund exist at Petaluma. Roanoke Park, 21.5% less per gallon of water, 5.7% is only transferred out of their water fund. City of Cattati, 23 less paid per gallon of water, no transfer out of the water fund. City of Windsor, 32% paid less per gallon. For them, they transferred out $267, or about 3% of their net transfer out of the water fund. For comparison, the city of Sonoma transferred out in 2014, 34% of the Water Enterprise Fund, or $1.4 million. 2015, 19%, or $846,000. And I'm just looking at all these audited financial statements. You, of course, can look at any one of these and find the similar disparities. These significant amounts, well, back to the budget. According to the budgets from 2012 through 2017, the city plans on transferring between 18 and 24% of water revenue out of the budget. It's really hard to tell where this money goes. I did ask the city manager for the details of these transactions, and I'll be happy to report back when I find out more. According to the city's audited financial statements between 2011 and 2015, the city of Sonoma transferred a net of $3.5 million out of the water fund, or an average of 17% a year for the five years available. I suggest the City Council look into this. You know, look at the practices of other cities like Burbank, Riverside, Pasadena, Anaheim, Long Beach, and so on, all of whom had to return these funds to the water fund.
Can we give about 10 more seconds?
Thank you. So, anyway, I just ask that you look at this, and please help the ratepayers here in Sonoma. Thank you.
For those standing in the back, I see four seats up here in the front, if you want to come sit down.
Good evening. My name is Howard Sapper, S-A-P-P-E-R, and I'm the newly appointed District One Human Rights Commissioner, and I've come to speak in favor of the council looking favorably on the TOT increase, especially as it relates to affordable housing, which is a very important issue here in our county, and especially in Sonoma. So, I just wanted to give my voice in support of that. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment today?
I have a comment. My name is Patty DeFer, and I live at 465 East MacArthur Street. I'm next to the cemetery. I think I, excuse me. I really didn't expect that to happen. Two of the huge trees that are over 200 years old came down over the weekend. And I wrote some of you about what we could do about it because they are historic and they're part of our valley cemetery. So, I even talked to the people that were over there yesterday, starting to work on taking out some of the trees, and they said it'd be at least a couple of days before they could get to the stumps that are over three feet wide. Well, I came home today, and they've already cut one of them down completely, the bigger one. In the process, I have pictures for you. They've been stepping on some of the headstones in total disregard for the property. And my thought was, something could be done wonderful with these trees. And so, I sent some of you pictures of a bench that's in Golden Gate Park when one of their trees came down. And I think that had this one tree not be butchered already, you could probably have made two benches out of that. And it's an area where many people go, and they try to sit, there's no place to sit there. So, you have one tree left, and I think that you should urge your Public Works Department, and Gary, I know you're on the Tree Committee, to get out there tomorrow and stop them from what they're doing. So, at least you can have some time to make some good plans about this. So, I'll leave you with these. I urge you to go over and take a look, and I can understand clearing the street. I talked to them about the possibility of using the trunks for something, and to go ahead and continue to do this was horrible. In addition to which, there are people over there now with their children letting them climb on the trees, and I don't know if you know anything about widowmakers, but I think you need to close the cemetery down, or at least lock it on the weekends at night. So, here they are. Who should I give with you?
Can I add to our City Clerk?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none. Are there any meeting dedications today?
So, a meeting dedication to Larry Epstein, who passed away this week. He was a Rotarian, served on the Sonoma County Grand Jury for quite a time, came from the Hayward area, and involved numerous senior projects and programs, and just wanted to give a shout out to his family who's up here actually today for the services. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further meeting dedications? We have no presentations scheduled for today, so we're going to move on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Are there any council questions about the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'm going to take it out to the public for public comment.
Hi, Mayor Hunley and Council. I'm Patrick Carter. I'm the Executive Director of the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, and I'd just like to say a few words about Item 4B, which is the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency amended and restated agreement. Just wanted to point out to the council that this has been a very long time coming. We've been talking about this item within the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, and I've been before your council before, talking about this issue about three years now. It's been thoroughly vetted by all the lawyers and countless hours of staff time into this. But just wanted to thank you for taking this up tonight and point out a few things about this agreement. We've had third-party companies come in and look at our operations, and they've found that by working together, we're saving the ratepayers about $1.4 million a year versus if every city in the county went it alone and had to duplicate their efforts to do what this agency does. It provides flexibility to its members. If there's additional programs that we propose, members can opt out if they'd like to, so that we try to make this as flexible as possible without making it ineffective. And I think we've struck the right balance there. It protects its members through indemnification protections, and it streamlines operations. So, I thank you for taking this up tonight, and thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for comment or a motion.
I do have a comment. I have a comment on, let's see, sorry, Waste Management Agency. Thank you so much, Patrick, for coming in this evening, and we discussed this last week at the board, at the last meeting. This agency actually is so important to the county of Sonoma because it oversees a lot of issues that affect the health and welfare of the people here in Sonoma County, and of course, people in Sonoma. So, this is really an important agency. Money isn't the issue. The safety of everyone here in this county, our lives, and all of the issues that they oversee are very important. These are some things that people don't pay attention to, but this agency really is a watchdog for this county, and I'm excited about this, you know, information this evening. So, if there are no questions or comments, I would love to make a motion to approve 4A, 4B, 4C, and 4D.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I want to make one final comment of thanking Councilmember Aggermonte. Is this your third year working with this group? And everyone that was involved with the Waste Management Agency, it's been a long time coming, so I'm glad we can pass it today. So, City Clerk, can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Mayor Hunley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is our regular calendar. Item 7A is Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Authorize the City Manager to Execute a Task Order to the Master City Engineering Service Agreement with GHD Inc. for the Recycled Water Feasibility Analysis Project for an amount not to exceed $56,153. I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Hunley and Councilmembers. This issue before you tonight is to issue a task order to conduct a recycled water feasibility study. The Water Agency has recently brought recycled water up to a location at about Fifth Street East and Denmark Street, and the council goal is to examine the feasibility of bringing it up toward the Plaza, which might not only include the Plaza, but also, we could look at Arnold Field, Field of Dreams, Depot Park, and the Veterans Cemetery as well. So, the staff recommends that we execute this task order to perform this feasibility analysis. I would like to note that we won't be looking at specific routes in this analysis. We think we could save that for later because that would cost a little bit of extra money that we really don't want to spend at this time. We mostly want to get the costs and the feasibility of whether it's even possible first. So, with that, I'll ask for a council motion action on this.
Thank you. I have a question. Can you explain in any more detail about what the things they will be considering and what the result will look like that we get to consider?
The things to be considered are the need for pumping stations, the need for tank storage. They'd look at the water demand on the various fields that we're looking at irrigating to see if we can even get recycled water of the quantity needed at specific times. Often, one of the problems we have is that many of the fields want to irrigate at the same time, and that may not be feasible. We may have to look at staggering some of the irrigation times in order to do things like this. But most importantly, we want to get a cost estimate of what it would take to get recycled water to the Plaza area and beyond. It may, we'll also look into available grants. There are many grants that could help in this process as well, and we'll take a look at those.
Thank you. Are there any other council questions? Seeing none, I will take this out to the public for public comment. Seeing no public comments, I will bring it back to the council for a discussion and a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, what am I, to approve the amount of $56,153 for, to execute a task order to the Master City Engineering Services with GHD Incorporated.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Cook?
I just wanted to comment on this to Public Works and the new city manager. Thank you. This is something that we've been talking about, and even though we're not in a drought situation, it looks like, for the next couple of months, this is something that I think the future of Sonoma, it's good for us to look at. And as a reminder, I think that one thing that we need to look at in the future is possibly drilling a well on the Plaza. I'd like to always keep that in the thought, but I will be supporting this tonight.
And I would like to say I'm also excited about seeing the feasibility of this and what it would entail. If anyone remembers back when we were in the drought, and everyone else was restricted as to how much you could water your lawn, except we kept the Plaza so that we could water it as much as it needed because we wanted to save all the trees. So, I think that, long-term, the most sustainable way to maintain it would be to use recycled water, and I think that us expanding it only increases the chances that other places are going to use it and other businesses. So, if there's no further discussion, can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Mayor Hunley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 7B, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Adopt the Plans and Specifications, Adopt a Resolution to Award the Construction Contract to Anvil Builders Incorporated, Lowest Responsible bidder for the West Napa Street Water System Replacement Project Number 1303, and Authorize the City Manager to Execute a Construction Contract in the Amount of $2,371,775. I will turn it over to the Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. As you mentioned, the issue before us is to award a contract for a major utility project, probably the largest one the city's had in quite a while. I'd like to briefly go through an introduction to the project, more so for the public, just to understand what this project is, which is going to be extremely disruptive when it is under construction. What we're trying to do is replace an old water system along West Napa Street, where we have old pipe that's really known to be leaking in many places. We're probably losing water, so this would have a major water conservation improvement. We'll also be adding fire hydrants and really increasing the reliability of the water system in that area so that we don't have these emergency breakages. This, as I mentioned, this water system is very old, breaks often, and this project will certainly help so we don't have to make those emergency unplanned repairs. It involves almost 3,000 feet of water main from about Fifth Street West out to Staples, and we'll be replacing many water service lines along the way. The location of the project, as I mentioned, is about from the Plaza out to Staples, although the actual section of water main is only from Fifth Street West to Staples, whereas the water service replacements occur along the way from the Plaza out to Staples. Typical plan shot of what will be occurring is a water, new water main will be going in on the north side of West Napa Street, along the westbound lane, and along the way, many water service lines will tag off of that to the various properties. I can't say it enough, but, well, Caltrans requires this to happen at night, which is probably a good idea because everybody knows how much traffic is happening on West Napa Street during the day. But it will be more difficult at night. There will be noise, there will be lights, and, but fortunately, the traffic is far less, there's far less traffic at night, so we can do one-way traffic control much easier. During the day, there will be steel plates, there'll probably be minimal disruptions. It won't look pretty, but at least it'll be drivable in both directions. Some of the impacts, as I've mentioned, traffic control, we'll have flaggers directing one-way traffic each way, signage, lighting, emergency vehicles can get through. There may be driveway access disruptions, but again, this is at night. And there may occasionally be some work that has to happen during the day, but I think that will be fairly minimal. And on occasion, we'll have water main shutdowns, but again, this is at night. So, we hope to award the contract tonight, give a notice to proceed in about mid-March, and construction starting in early April and completing possibly in about mid-July. A couple of things we're trying to beat are sewer trunk line construction by the Water Agency in 2018, and Caltrans paving Highway 12 throughout the city in about 2019 or We have already made a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce in March. We'll hope to send a mailer out in early March to all the affected property owners along the way. We'll do door-to-door visits to all the businesses, including contact information of our construction inspectors, so that if any problems occur, they can, they'll know who to contact. We'll have a press release on the traffic disruptions, although most of that shouldn't be visible unless you're out in the middle of the night. And then, 14 days prior to construction in each work area, the contractor will notify the adjacent property owners, and two days prior, if there's going to be any driveway access impacts, the contractor will notify those property owners. And then, of course, we'll keep people updated on the city website. Okay, so that's the basis of the project. Now, we come to the project award. Bids were opened on January 12th of 2017. Six bids were received. The low bid was from Anvil Construction at a cost of $2,371,775. We did receive a protest from the second low bidder, which is Team Gilati Incorporated. They expressed some concern about a number of factors that they felt would cause us not to be advised to award to Anvil Construction. However, staff and the city attorney reviewed those items on the bid protest, and we did not feel that any competitive advantage would have been gained by the low bidder by any of the issues raised. The bid documents clearly allow the council to waive any defects or bid irregularities. Therefore, staff is recommending that the council waive any accidental and immaterial irregularities and award the construction contract to Anvil Construction. With that, I welcome any questions.
Do you know when the water, the water main that we're replacing was originally installed?
About 50 years ago.
Wow. Are there any other council questions? Seeing none, I will take it out to the public for public comment. Okay, if there's public comment, you can come up to the podium, state your name and address.
My name's Janet Engelbrecht, E-N-G-E-L-B-R-E-C-H-T. I live on 990 First Street West here in Sonoma. My question is, where is all this heavy equipment going to be stored during the day? I mean, you're doing the work at night, but isn't there going to be a lot of heavy equipment? So, where is that going to be during the day? And I'll listen to Mike.
I'll get an answer to that question after the closed public comment.
Hi, my name's Logan Harvey, L-O-G-A-N-H-A-R-V-E-Y. I live at 527 Marion Drive. So, my question is, a lot of times when these water main projects or water-related projects are done, you just get this small strip of different asphalt that tends to chip and crack and continue to cause a problem, given the fact that the roads are already a little bit disrupted. Is that going to be the solution? Or when Highway 12 is repaved, you were saying maybe 2018, 2019, would that cover this entire section? Because it just seems to me if we're going to do a water main through that entire roadway, that we might as well repave the entire road rather than just leaving a long strip in the middle.
Thank you. I'll get an answer to your question at the end.
Good evening, Mayor Hunley, Councilmembers. My name is Catherine DeLorey, D-E-L-O-R-E-Y. I'm with the firm of Oles Morrison, and I represent Team Gilati. Team Gilati is the bidder that submitted the bid protest, and we, Team Gilati was very detailed in its protest, but we sent a supplemental letter yesterday, last night, and I'm not sure if the council has received that or reviewed it. Are you aware of?
We did receive the letter.
Okay, thank you. And we just wanted to highlight some of the deviations in the bid of the, of Anvil Builders. We feel that those deviations are material and cannot be waived. There was an express condition in the bidding instructions that stated that the plans and specifications must be purchased through a certain vendor, and admittedly, that was not done. So, it's not clear which bids, which bid set that Anvil Builders bid on. So it's not clear which bids, which bid set that Anvil Builders bid on, whether... There was some, I understand the summary, it did state that they got a bid set from somewhere else, but it's really not clear how that is known. We feel that because it states in the bid, in the bidding instructions, that if you do not purchase the bid set from BPX, your bid will be non-responsive, that that is controlling. There, there are a few other items that were not, few other bid requirements that were not followed by Anvil Builders. One is that they did not submit a certificate of authority that is necessary for a bid by a corporation. That is also an express requirement in the bidding instructions. I understand it was provided afterward, but not with the bid. Also, there was an acknowledgement that was provided with the bid that was, that had no legal effect. It was not properly worded per the statute. And I, again, I understand that that was provided after the bid, but not with the bid. And finally, the bid itself was not completely filled out. And there was one bid item where they did not fill in the total price of the bid, although they did put a unit price. And that is non-responsive. The totality of all these irregularities in the bid...
I'll give you about fifteen more seconds.
The totality of the irregularities did save Anvil time, and we feel that these mistakes gave them a competitive advantage over the other bidders, and that the council cannot waive these.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment on this item? Seeing none, we have two questions. One was about the location of the storage of the heavy equipment, and the second was the question about paving.
Thank you. The contractor per, the contract is required to find their own staging area. We don't know exactly where that is at this time. Once the contract is awarded, I'm sure they will be seeking out a staging area to place all their equipment. So, but we do know that it can't be parked along West Napa Street. As for the patching, we are following Caltrans standards, which require a very high-quality asphalt patch afterwards over the utility trench. I would like to point out that in a lot of utility projects, you will see this kind of rough patch that comes in right after the pipe is installed, and people are saying, oh, my goodness, the contractor did a horrible job. That patch is usually just temporary. They put in a low-quality asphalt mix so that they can finish other parts of the project. And then, at the very end, they'll come back and fix that with a much higher-quality asphalt patch. But we do expect that Caltrans will come through the entire city and pave Highway 12, which is a super-great benefit for the city. I don't think the city would want to take on any of those costs on our own, but we'd rather defer those costs to the state.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion or a motion?
Mayor, may I make one comment, please?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly respond to the comments made by Team Gelati's attorney, and I wanted to assure the council that staff and our offices reviewed the deviations, and we still continue to maintain that there's no credible evidence that Anvil gained any kind of significant or substantial competitive advantage as a result of its oversight, and are recommending that you adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution of the city council of the City of Sonoma accepting the bids for the West Napa Street Water System Replacement Project, awarding the construction contract to Anvil Builders Incorporated of San Francisco in the amount of two million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five, and authorizing the city manager to sign the contract on behalf of the city.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I'll make one comment in that I think infrastructure is one of the most basic responsibilities of local governments, and aging water infrastructure in particular is something that a lot of cities and counties are struggling with. So I'm glad that we are able to get this huge project done, and I'm sure it'll drive us crazy in the meantime, but I suspect it'll give us another fifty years at least, probably more. City Clerk, can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Harington?
Aye.
Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to item seven C, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding a request by Mayor Hunley to discuss approving a resolution to affirm the City of Sonoma's commitment to diversity and to safeguarding the civil rights, safety and dignity of all of our residents. I will first hand it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Hunley and council. Just as a reminder to council and community, per the council's policy, if a council member wants to place something on the agenda, they communicate to, to the city manager, and then a request is brought, brought before you. So the action tonight is for the council to consider whether you want to do a resolution looking at affirming Sonoma's commitment to diversity and safeguarding civil rights, safety and dignity for all of our residents, and celebrating the history of immigrant contributions. So this is, there is no actual resolution in front of you. The question to the council is, do you want to agendize and bring back a resolution or any other action on this? And if so, where staff is looking for, what is the scope of that resolution? The staff report provided some basic information on this, on this, and there is information that outlines kind of this term of sanctuary city, and cities are handling this in different ways. Some of your larger cities have been sanctuary cities or considering it. A number of smaller cities or medium-sized cities are not going the full sanctuary city route, but are looking at making sure that there are clear statements to their community about resolution, authorizing or articulating values and commitments in this area. So our police chief Brett Saket is here, and Brett can answer council, questions of council and community. There, we talked about this at the last meeting in terms of articulating what the police department's policy is with any kind of immigrant violations or those types of things, and he can go through that again as well. There are, with President Trump's executive order, part of the threat of becoming a sanctuary city is that federal funds that a city receives are potentially at risk. The staff report also lays out a number of current federal funding and/or grants the city receives or has received in the past. One large one is about a two-million-dollar federal grant to Fixity Street Bridge. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions. I think one piece I would say, and just for council and community, is that with the situation with the city, since we don't have our own police department, we contract with the county. We, as part of that contract, the operational policies and parameters are set by the sheriff. And so our ability to tell the sheriff kind of specifically, this is how you're going to do your operations, we do not have that authority as a contract city. We have a very good relationship with the sheriff and operations in the past, and a long history since, I think, 2004 with the contract. And, but Brett can speak to this as, as well. But I just think there, there is a different kind of relationship when you have your own police department versus when you're contracting for law enforcement services, and that is a different wrinkle that we are in as a community. So again, the request from Mayor Hunley, though, was to look at a resolution, and so with that context and background, I'll turn it to her for her remarks. And then staff is happy to answer any questions, and we can hear from the community as well.
Thank you. I wanted to bring this item before us because I've, everyone's been following the news lately, and I've had lots of discussions informally and received a lot of correspondence about people who want to either talk about this or maybe figure out a way that Sonoma can take part in either reassuring people or maybe even do something more pragmatic. So the reason that I have brought for the possibility of a resolution for inclusivity or something of that nature is that I think that it would be, I think it's important for a community to establish when they have shared values, and I think there's a lot of benefits that come out of it. In this issue in particular, there's issues related to the health, well-being, and general welfare of our residents. I think that the issue of discrimination is something that needs to be talked about, and especially in our area, I think that acknowledging that, that, that it is damaging to communities is something that is in the city interest to talk about. And I'm also, I would like to hear what my co-council members think about this, since, since we're not allowed to talk about this amongst ourselves. This is the forum that we have to have this conversation. So I look forward to hearing from all of you in the community. When we go to public comment, because there are so many people, it's going to be a strict three minutes. I'll open it in just a second. And, yeah, so tonight, we're going to be, one, deciding whether this is something we want to move forward to, and, two, if this is, what are the kinds of things that we would like to include in something like this? And then I think also there's the possibility of how we want to put it together, whether we want to put together a subcommittee to work on it. So that's where I'm starting from. And are there any questions to get started? Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I guess my first question would be to staff, to the police chief of Sonoma. We do have a JPA with, with the sheriff's department. And right now, could you explain exactly what happens to a resident who gets pulled over? And let's say it's a DUI, it's a second offense, and they do go to jail. Could you kind of explain to me what the procedure is and where, where anything could deviate from a resolution from the City of Sonoma that would change any, any, any way that that individual would be treated?
Certainly, I can provide you some background on that. And just for minor point of clarification, it's, I'm not sure it would be considered a JPA. It'd be more considered a law enforcement agreement with the county, which we've been in since 2004. So I think when I came before the council last meeting, I explained what our policy was pertaining to immigration violations. And so I would be happy to go over that point by point again if necessary. But in essence, I think it's important to realize that, according to our street policy, that we are not allowed to ask people about their immigration status. And if you call for help, you are going to get a deputy to show up, and they're not going to be interested at all in your immigration status. They're going to be interested in how they can help you solve your problem, okay? And the scenario that you, you provided, I think that a couple of things could happen. So obviously DUI is a big concern for, for us. We have been unfortunate to too many locations where we've had to go meet with family members about people who have been, you know, hurt or injured by drunk drivers. And so we do take DUIs seriously. We do not arrest all drunk drivers. Some of them are cited in the field. When they come back and provide a field sobriety test and a breath test, they can be released to a responsible party. But if somebody has had a prior DUI, there's a very good likelihood that the deputy is going to, in fact, take them to county jail and book them in the county jail. So if they're booked in the county jail, they will be afforded an opportunity to bail like anybody else, and depending upon the jail situation in terms of population, they may even be eligible to be released on a citation from the county jail. I think the impetus of your question is, if they do get housed, what happens to them? So anybody who's booked into the county jail has their fingerprints taken. It's electronically now, and one set is sent to the Department of Justice at the state, where you are checked against local wants and warrants in the state of California. So issues out of Long Beach or San Diego or, you know, Colusa County would all be in the state database. Your fingerprints are also sent to the FBI for national wants and warrants in terms of, well, you're wanted out of Tennessee or Chicago or Washington DC or anywhere else. And then the third set is sent to the Department of Homeland Security, where you are checked against a database of known offenders, or people that are interested, have an interest by the Department of Justice, or, I mean, Department of Homeland Security. In those cases, if Homeland Security finds someone that they're interested in, they will send a notice to the sheriff's department and say, I noticed you booked subject A. We would like to be notified when he is released or her, or she is released. Upon receiving one of those, again, this is the sheriff's policy regarding detention, has nothing to do with, with field work. He notifies both the inmate and, at the inmate's request, his attorney or her attorney that we have been notified by Department of Homeland Security or ICE that they know you're in custody. It doesn't change what we do. It doesn't change their access to attorneys or legal assistance or jail services or anything else. And it doesn't stop us from releasing them through either credit for time served or OR'd or bail at a later time. So as I've said before, anytime someone's booked in the county jail, it's public knowledge. You can go on the sheriff's website right now and figure out who's in, who's in jail. You can call down to county jail and ask if someone's in there, and they will tell you if they are or not. And they will tell you the approximate release date if one is known. So what happens is twenty-four hours prior to an inmate being released, ICE will send, or Department of Homeland Security will send a notice and say, can, is this person still scheduled to be released at a certain time? If the sheriff receives that, he once again goes into the inmate and to the inmate's attorney at their request and says, they have also contacted us to let you know, let us know that, to ask us when you're going to be released. We've provided that information to them. Again, that information is public knowledge. You can call down to the jail and ask when someone's going to be released. We oftentimes notify people statutorily, victims of domestic violence, for instance, would like to know when their, when their abusers are being released from custody. So we know that. It doesn't stop us from releasing people. If ICE says, thank you very much, they come down. Whether they're here or not, we have no idea. We release inmates at various times, depending upon the workload of the, of the jail staff, the court minutes, the court process. If they're released, they're open the front door and out they go. We don't hold them for ICE, we don't hold them for Department of Homeland Security, we don't hold them for anything. We just open the door and let them walk out the door. If ICE is in the, is in the lobby, then they are. If they're in the parking lot, there's nothing that we can do to control that. So again, those are all public information in terms of, of release dates. So that's kind of what happens. I think it answers your question, I hope, in terms of what happens when you're arrested on a second time DUI.
Yeah, because what I wanted to be clear at, so there's two, there's two different scenarios. There's one, if somebody goes to detention, that's, turns into a county sheriff matter. Any resolution that we do here in the City of Sonoma would affect just what you call field work. But right now, the City of Sonoma, the procedures are the, kind of the, the protocols out there in the field. Right now, there's no immigration status ever. If somebody calls 911 and a police officer shows up and nobody's going to jail, there's never immigration.
No. We don't even ask that question.
Thank you.
Just, Mayor Hunley, may I ask Chief Saket to go back and review? At the last meeting, he articulated some of the key points in kind of the law enforcement field operation policy, and there are a lot of folks here in the audience, and I would like to make sure that we've talked about the jail side and detention, but I'd like also just to reiterate some of the pieces to make sure there's a lot of clarity about what our police department is and is not doing in regarding asking for any immigration status on kind of regular field operations.
Sure, and really quick, I see two seats up here in the front, one over on this side and a few in the back. For those of you standing in the lobby, if you want to come forward, there's some seats.
Great. Just to kind of a highlight, again, this will be repeat for some of you, but it, I think it is important information, and thank you, the city manager, for asking me to repeat it. So these are just kind of some bullet points I sent to the council previously, and I've also basically read that statement. I will do it again. The Sonoma Police Department respects the rights of all people and embraces the diversity of our community. The Sonoma Police Department is committed to equal enforcement of the law and equal service to the public regardless of immigration status. In compliance with the California Trust Act, the Sonoma Police Department does not and will not engage in federal immigration enforcement activities. As a matter of fact, we are not authorized to do so. We shall not arrest or detain any person solely for violations pertaining to immigration. We shall not undertake any interrogation of any person for the sole purpose of ascertaining his or her immigration status. We shall not independently conduct sweeps or other concentrated efforts for the purpose of locating and/or detaining persons who are solely suspected of being illegally present in the United States. However, to protect our community against serious or violent criminals or predators, we will work collaboratively with ICE under very limited circumstances, which is including the apprehension of serious or violent criminals. However, and this is a requirement put in by our sheriff himself into our policy, is that... that, as a condition to work with ICE, we shall require that ICE refrain from arresting or taking custody of any person based solely on immigration status, including low-level and minor traffic offenses. So if ICE comes here looking for someone who assaulted a Border Patrol agent, or wanted for, you know, murder, and they ask for our assistance, we would be happy to provide that to them, under the limited circumstances, and that they are not allowed to conduct any other enforcement activities other than what they came here initially for. And if they do, we'll walk away. Now, from a practical standpoint, that, first of all, ICE doesn't work that frequently with the sheriff's office. As a matter of fact, in my nearly 13 years in Sonoma Valley, I don't remember ever a time when ICE has been out here, ever, working with us. Now, I do know, the sheriff's department has a multi-agency gang enforcement team, and on occasion, ICE has worked with them. And these parameters have been established, and according to the magnet director, the gang director, that they have been more than happy to comply with that, and there's never been an issue of them straying from that policy. So, now, going back to our policy, as a way to kind of help victims of violence who may be undocumented, we shall, to the best of our abilities, assist persons seeking to obtain U visas and T visas, which extends temporary immigration benefits to victims or witnesses for certain qualifying crimes such as human trafficking. So I think that the policy that we have is consistent throughout Sonoma County, is based upon a Sonoma County Law Enforcement Chief's policy, which is also modeled after kind of a statewide policy through what's called Lexipol, which is a group of attorneys that specialize in providing, you know, solid, constitutionally valid policies for police and sheriff agencies. So, it's kind of a highlight of our.
Thank you. Councilmember Harrington?
I just want to clarify, either with the city manager or the city attorney, to the extent that we wanted to adopt a policy that superseded, or had other elements that were in conflict with anything contained in the sheriff's current policy, that would not be possible, correct? We cannot make the sheriff follow any rules that are in conflict with the rules they already have. Is that correct?
That's my understanding of the contract terms, correct.
So, with regard to the issue about being a sanctuary city or adopting a resolution, we don't have the authority to direct the sheriff to engage in any particular conduct?
That's correct, based on the contract.
Any further council questions?
To the city manager, can you give me a list, or give the audience a list, of what cities are currently sanctuary cities in the United States?
I can't in the United States. I did find a list of agency of cities in the Bay Area as of the end of February. So if you give me a few minutes, maybe go to another question, I'll find that and be happy to answer.
Sure. I have one for the city attorney as well. So Jeff, if, let's say that the council comes up with some sort of language. In the reading that I've been doing, that there's not any really legal basis for, even though there may be a sanctuary city, there's not a real legal foundation to it. And I'm not an attorney, or don't claim to be. So what happens if we make some sort of statement, and then an individual comes and they happen to be arrested, and then deported while in the city limits? Do we expose ourselves to any kind of liability? Because we said, hey, we're not going to do anything, but something happens where they, things fall into place, or what have you, and they become an opportunity for deportation?
Well, I think the first thing that needs to be clear is that the city is constrained in what it can and cannot do. And we need to take a very careful look, again, at the contract with the sheriff's department, and see what areas the city has to move and navigate within. It may be very limited. In fact, it may be non-existent in terms of affecting the steps and the practice and procedures followed by infield officers. And if that's the case, then all the council would be entitled to do is to adopt some general statements of support of members in the community, and to assure that their constitutional rights are protected. When you dive down in the details, it gets very, very problematic. You run smack against the contract, smack against the sheriff's policies, and that essentially, though, is where you need to be if you want to change those policies. And you can't be there. So it's difficult to answer your question. If you adopt a general statement of support for diversity in the neighborhood, in the community, there's no violating that. It would be hard for the police to violate that in the conduct of their daily affairs, so the liability would not be very significant.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Protam Edwards, can I have Chief Sackett also elaborate?
Absolutely.
So, I just wanted to kind of follow up on a couple of things. First and foremost, I think when you talk about the sheriff's department in general, it's very, very important that we understand that the sheriff is an elected official, and that he has broad responsibilities, one of which is to run a county jail. And so, some of the people are unhappy with his jail policies. And when we talk about what the city of Sonoma can or can't do, it's important to focus our energies on the delivery of frontline patrol services, which is what we do for the city. I don't care if you're in Petaluma, Roanoke Park, Sebastopol, Santa Rosa, those councils cannot dictate to the sheriff how he runs the county jail. That's in his domain. Now, in the unique situations of contract cities, of course, the sheriff has demonstrated time and time again that he's a very reasonable fellow, and that he wants contracts to be successful. But at the same time, he is the subject matter expert in terms of policy. And when we talk about the policy, I read here, the highlights, we think it strikes a very solid balance between protecting the immigrant community, at the same time, providing the tools, when necessary, to really remove bad people from our community. And it's a good balance, that we think, and to our knowledge, it's never been abused. And so, I'm struggling with kind of understanding where people have concerns or questions about our field policy pertaining to this, because I've never had anybody really articulate what that is to me. And so, I'd be happy to try to explore that, if I can find out what it is that we're trying to accomplish.
How often is the field policy changed? And are there any anticipated changes coming up?
So, the field policy gets changed, I wouldn't say frequently, but if you give me a second, I can probably give you the revision history on it.
Typically, these policies through Lexipol, there is a complete review annually, and then as there are law changes, or something happens on a state or federal level, then Lexipol will push out to all the law enforcement agencies' updates, because you need to make sure that your practices are current. So typically, there is a full annual review, and then there are also periodic reviews based on change in policy on the federal or state level that impact local operations.
So to answer your question, our policy looks like it came into effect in December of 2004. It was updated again in August of 11, June of 12, July of 15, and January of 16. And I know we're currently in a policy review, but I don't believe there's been any recommendations to change it.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
One last question. I want to thank you, Brett, for talking to me today a lot about this subject, because I think it's a very important subject. Does ICE notify the city of Sonoma through the police chief or the sheriff's department when they are coming through Sonoma, or doing any actual enforcement?
So, again, I don't think ICE is required to notify us at all when they come through.
But do they?
But a professional courtesy was that they normally notify either the police department, or oftentimes through dispatch, depending upon the circumstances. But again, in my nearly 13 years working in the city of Sonoma, and also supervising the Sonoma Valley, I cannot recall one single incident where ICE has contacted us for assistance out here.
Thank you.
Mayor Henley, maybe just a few other key points, as we pulled some things to go back to Mayor Protam Edwards' question. This was an article I found online through the San Jose American News, and the region's sanctuary cities at the end of January, per this site, were San Francisco, Oakland, Alameda, Berkeley, Richmond, and San Jose. And we do have the contract here with, between the city and the sheriff's department for law enforcement services. And there's a section that very clearly says, and I don't think this has been an issue hardly at all, and maybe ever Brett can speak to, in the years of history that the city has had with contract law enforcement, but there's a paragraph, I'll have the city attorney read, that speaks to, if there is a conflict in policy or practice, and what the final decision banker, being the sheriff. So, we'll have the city attorney read that.
Yes, I think this puts a very clear point on the discussion we're having. This is Section 13 of our agreement with the sheriff's department. It says, and I quote, "The requirements of this agreement shall take precedence over any contradictory county or city procedures. The sheriff and city manager shall confer should any conflict exist between county and city procedures. However, in view of the sheriff's expertise with regard to law enforcement procedures and their impact upon the operation of the sheriff's department, the sheriff retains the final authority to determine how any conflicts between county and city procedures shall be resolved."
Thank you. We're going to take it out to public comments, since there's so many people that are going to be speaking today. It's going to be a strict three minutes, so I'll cut you off at three minutes, and it's nothing personal. I appreciate what you have to say. If a few people can be prepared around the back, where this gentleman in the suspenders is, ready to go, we can keep this going and get to everybody tonight. So make sure you say your name and where you live.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is James Woods. I live at 969 Country Club Lane. I'm a member of the State Bar of California, a member of the State Bar of New York, and I'm a former Berkeley police officer. I'm appearing here today, not on behalf of anyone, but as a citizen of our fine community. I applaud you, Mayor, for raising these issues. These are significant issues, and one that is, it goes to the heart of our community. My wife asked me a simple question today. What would we do without all of these service people who may be undocumented? What would the wineries do? What would the restaurants do? What would the rest of the service industry do if there was a mass deportation? Chief, I'm delighted to hear what you provided. Law enforcement is the exercise of the art of discretion. You have outlined, in my mind, a very full, complete list of discretionary items that your force must be applauded for. And I think if we work with you carefully to make sure that your outline is followed, then our immigrant community will be well-served. So thank you for considering this. Incidentally, you raised a good point. If there is friction with the sheriff, he is elected. And I'll leave it on that note. Two other constructive notes. One, we need to communicate what you said, and what you're attempting to achieve, Madam Mayor, more fully with our community. My wife and I attended Lelouz, where two members of the sheriff's department appeared, and they espoused the same issues that you mentioned, Chief. If we could get that out, the fear that is in this community would subside dramatically. And I appeal to your leadership, Chief, and you, Madam Mayor, in doing that. You'll have commitments from the citizens to try to do this as well. So, let's get the word out. Right now, undocumented feel like the Nazis have invaded our community and are going after them. I have people that live near me that refuse to leave their homes. So we've got to communicate what the real rules are, and remember, law enforcement is the art of, the exercise of discretion.
Thank you. And just a note of order, if you like what somebody's saying, you can do some silent jazz hands. And next up, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Frank Wines, W-I-N-D-E-S. I live at 2003 Denmark Street, and I am a member of the Spiritual Action Group at the Sonoma United Methodist Church. Three local groups, Sonoma Valley Housing Coalition, Transition Sonoma Valley, and It Won't Happen Here, strongly encourage the council to place sanctuary, or as the mayor has put it, reaffirming the city of Sonoma's commitment to diversity and safeguarding the civil rights, safety, and dignity of all our residents on your agenda for discussion. It has become a serious issue for many people who live, work, and conduct business in the city. But while the idea of sanctuary can raise important questions to debate and resolve, underneath, there are a number of practical issues, which urgently need action by the council. We have prepared a list of topics that we recommend that you include in your discussion. We support the city reaffirming its commitment, and as part of that, we would suggest that you consider encouraging the sheriff to implement the recommendations of the Independent Office of Law Enforcement Review and Outreach, that he cease existing cooperation with ICE. Asking our state representative to support SB 54, which would require the sheriff to do the above. Convening a public forum in Sonoma, at which IOLERO immigration law representatives and the sheriff's office clarify the latter's current cooperation with ICE. However, we are aware that despite the best efforts of our local and state governments, the federal government may nonetheless arrest and deport some of our neighbors. Consequently, here are some things that we would suggest the council consider. Sponsoring and supporting Know Your Rights clinics for all of us. Supporting family participation for possible deportation, and for children left behind. Setting up and contributing to a legal defense fund, and finding lawyers to staff it. Reading the community, readying the community for the trauma of residents disappearing after a knock on the door. We look forward to discussion and action on these issues. We will be happy to confer with any council committee set up to work on this. Some of these topics need a bit of background. Various members of our groups will provide that background. We look forward to discussion and action on these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Hiller. I live at 516 Seventh Street West in Sonoma. I am a member of the It Won't Happen Here Coalition of Organizations. I helped to compose the statement, which has been circulating around the county now for a couple of months. And with your permission, I'd like to read it to you. It's not very long. "It Won't Happen Here, whereas to safeguard the equal and inalienable rights and inherent dignity of all people that is the foundation of the relationship between a government and the people, and whereas, we recognize that the rights and dignity of all people are under threat. We, the undersigned individuals, call upon all Sonoma County governing authorities and law enforcement agencies to pledge in writing to protect all of the county's community members. Furthermore, we call upon these authorities and agencies to proclaim publicly that they will refuse to cooperate with any demands from the federal government to institute detentions, deportations, registries, conversion therapies, imprisonment, or any other acts that target or discriminate based on immigration status, race, ethnicity, religion, country of origin, ability, political affiliation, economic status, age, gender identity, or sexual orientation. Furthermore, we, the undersigned individuals, in obedience to our consciences, pledge to protect all community members, and will support our local governments as they move to resist these undemocratic and un-American practices in order to reaffirm their commitment to exclusivity, respect, and dignity." So that statement has been circulating, and about 100, and I'm not sure what the latest count is, but I think it's around 150 organizations have endorsed it. And there are 1,700 signatures online, and 1,400 signatures on hard copy petitions in support of this statement of conscience. And... And I urge this council to adopt a resolution that would be similar in sentiment and intention to this one. I wish to note that the administration has released new deportation orders.
Thank you.
Am I out of time?
Yeah, three minutes.
Oh, that was quick.
Flies by.
Sorry.
Hi, I'm Jody Monahan, and I live at 1203 Larkin Drive, right off Napa Road. And I'm just a concerned citizen. I get together recently since our new president has been inaugurated with a few women who are concerned about the local and worldwide politics that are going on and what we can do to, to talk and do action towards things that we're concerned about. And this is one that's near to my heart. I'm two generations down from being Russian, of Russian and Polish Jewish grandparents who had to leave those countries because of the Nazi proliferation, and we lost some family members. And I, as a, as a child, I grew up with my parents being very active politically in being part of the movement to protect immigrants and people who don't have the same, have not been treated equally here in this country. And as one of the gentlemen said earlier, we rely on the immigrant community here in Sonoma as service workers, as our tourist industry, wine grape pickers, and winery workers. And if we didn't have them, where would we be to be able to be enjoying the, all that, you know, all that luxury from having those services from, by them? And I strongly believe that we should commit as a city and even county as, to protect our immigrants, to establish some procedures. I like this that came out of the sheet from these groups. And there's many different ways we can do that. And I don't, I would like our immigrants to not be concerned about their children going to school here, their parents disappearing, their grandparents disappearing, and I would like to just show my support for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Loretta Carr, 705 Third Street West. I'm the granddaughter of Mexican immigrants who worked in the fields and fruit packing houses of Central California. Tonight, I'm appealing to you to enact a policy to protect the hardworking immigrant residents and workers of our community. I've lived in Sonoma since 1971 and taught locally for many years, including two years for migrant education, 10 years for Sonoma Valley Adult School, teaching English as a second language and citizenship classes, and 10 years as a language tutor at Napa Valley College. My thousands of students came from Mexico, Central and South America, the Middle East, Africa, Asia, and Polynesia. None of them were terrorists or threats to this country. On the contrary, my students would celebrate each time one of their classmates successfully achieved language proficiency or their U.S. citizenship. One of my duties at the adult school was to register students every month. By 2012, when the adult school was unfortunately closed, the trend indicated that immigrants in Sonoma Valley had been here for a number of years and had become established. There were fewer and fewer newly arrived. Many of them have lived in Sonoma longer than some of us here tonight. Moreover, these members of our community are not just nameless, faceless workers picking grapes, mowing lawns, cooking food, cleaning hotel rooms, taking care of children and the elderly. They are contributors to the economic and cultural life of Sonoma. Their children, many of whom are U.S. citizens with every right to be here, attend our schools. It would be a moral outrage for their families to be forcibly separated or expelled. Besides the argument for basic compassion, I appeal to your business sense. The economy of Sonoma Valley is based on agriculture and tourism. With over 100 wineries, 65,000 acres of vineyards, 35 hotels and visitor accommodations, and 53 residents, all contributing billions of dollars to the local economy, this area would suffer greatly without its immigrant employees. This is in addition to the millions of dollars in disposable income that Latino consumers spend. Within the city of Sonoma, 15.3% are Hispanic Latino. Within a five-mile radius surrounding Sonoma, that number grows to 29.7%. Latinos are now the majority in California. Some are documented, some are not, but every individual in this state, every individual in this room, has benefited from the work of an immigrant. I implore you to safeguard this most valuable human asset. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Taylor Jordan. I live on 520 Solano Avenue, and I've never been to one of these before, so I'm just wondering if I could ask a couple of questions. Is that allowed?
If you have some questions, I'll write them down, and I'll have someone answer them at the very end.
Okay, that's fine. I guess my first question is, what exactly would we be if we declared ourselves a sanctuary city? Is it for our residents who live here and have built their families here, or are we going to be accepting other foreign undocumented people into our city? And as far as the Sheriff's Department and what their policy is, it seems, as far as from what I understood, that they have their own policy and that they don't just go out and deport people that, if there is anybody deported, it's because they've done a crime toward that, their policy is to fingerprint and send off the fingerprints. So if their end isn't changing, then what exactly would be declaring us a sanctuary change? As far as, I don't know if that makes sense, but like if they can't change anything on their end, what does that mean for our community as far as declaring us a sanctuary city? Like, how does that ensure any more safety for our illegal immigrant community that have resided here for so long?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Brown. I wasn't intended upon speaking this evening, but merely to come here to indicate my support for some action by the city council to reinforce the support that I think all of us really feel for all of our neighbors in the county and specifically in the, in the city. I respect the city attorney's opinion about the contract between the city and the Sheriff's Department. However, as a lawyer, a contract is a contract. And a contract is something that needs to be consistent with policy and needs to, and needs to have guidance in terms of its own effectuation. So I understand there are limitations on the contract as it exists now. However, it is, it seems to me that this council could take important steps in setting a framework for the discretionary decisions that are made in the enforcement of this policy, particularly, I think, in terms of the conditions inside the jail that impact, that could impact someone who's being held or detained for some period of time awaiting a criminal adjudication, and that information is provided to ICE. The second thing is, I'm a member of the Commission on the Status of Women here in the county. The commission was presented with a, with a statement, a resolution from It Won't Happen Here. We took that so seriously that we came back and added language that we thought was particularly appropriate, not in the establishment of a sanctuary city or county, but a reaffirmation of what we thought were the values of Sonoma and what we thought were, in fact, the values that are, that underlie our state and federal constitution. There's a lot this council can do, there's lots of statements this council can make that reassures our community that we are one community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just very briefly, my first name is Pather, last name is Dalton. I live at 460 La Quinta Lane, right here in the city. I'm the current president of Sonoma Valley Ministry Association. I want to thank the mayor for joining us today. We had 18 members present, and she came and visited with us and brought our awareness of this possible topic being brought up here this evening. So I want, on behalf of the association, to thank the mayor and the council for considering this topic. And I know you will come forward with a, some kind of statement that will be a sense of leadership for the broader community who are struggling with the right language for this kind of language. In case there's any ICE people here, I became a citizen in 1975. Secondly, I want to mention that our current Homeland Security Secretary is a man by the name of John Kelly. He must be aware there are at least 300,000 Irish people here illegally, and I doubt very, I doubt very much if they're going to be tapped on the shoulder by anybody anytime soon because of the color of their skin, that's my hunch. So, and we have been welcomed by this country in 40 million, give or take. And we are, I am obviously an immigrant myself, have been welcomed by this country and have served this country gallantly myself as best I can, but I've been welcomed, to use a Gaelic word, galore, in Mobile, Alabama, in New Orleans, and right here in Sonoma, California, which is by far the incredible example of hospitality regarding as an immigrant. So thank you for taking this topic up, and, and to the chief, and to all of you, and to, for bringing our awareness to this and for giving encouragement to people who are very nervous. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Just a reminder about applause. We don't let people boo, therefore, we don't let people applaud. So if you do agree with something a speaker says, you are free to shake your hands so they can see how much support they have.
You can't see the people out here, just when they're clapping.
I can see you. Mr. Alabac?
Good evening, mayor and council, and city staff, and Chief Sackett. I'm going to take this opportunity and this public forum to express my grave misgivings about the Trump administration's immigration policy and the recent Department of Homeland Security memorandum. The city has undocumented constituents. Our community in Sonoma is clearly affected. Every day sees a parade of undocumented workers in agriculture, hospitality, restaurants, construction, gardening, home health care, house cleaning, and as Loretta mentioned, another woman mentioned, professional members of the community of all stripes. These people are integral to and benefit our community and economy. They are us. I encourage the city council to speak out in the strongest terms possible against the Trump administration immigration policy in an effort to blackmail the city to submission by threat of withholding funds. I suggest a city resolution be crafted in the boldest terms and be representative of our demographics and community values. I suggest an ad hoc committee of Councilmember Harrington and Mayor Hundley. They're both lawyers, and I suggest also including Bob Edwards and Steve Arboz on this committee if they would deign to join. For tonight's hearing, I'd like to strongly support the joint statement by the Sonoma Valley Housing Group, It Won't Happen Here, Transition Sonoma Valley, and North Bay Jobs with Justice, and the statement, particularly the part of that statement that asks that the city convene a public forum in Sonoma at which the Independent Office of Law Enforcement Review and Outreach, immigration law representatives, and the sheriff's office clarify the latter's current cooperation with ICE. Potential sheriff's cooperation with ICE, particularly from jail, is the crux of the matter beyond municipal declarations and sanctuary and safe haven. And so as a question for the end of the hearing, I would like to ask if SB 54 would stop fingerprint So I have some general statements about law enforcement here, but basically, I'd like to conclude by asking the city council to make a strong resolution of values to stand in solidarity with our undocumented community members. And I would like also to thank Chief Sackett for gracefully and patiently explaining what's up over time, because I'm starting to get it, and I really want to know.
Thanks. Who's next?
Good evening. My name is Ted Sexhour. I live at 12 Hacienda Drive in the city. I'm just standing up here to, there's a question that was asked by another audience member recently. What difference does it make if the policies are already in place and they won't be changed? I think it's very important and very significant that we make a statement, and I urge you to do that. And the recommendation of the gentleman who stood up here first about communication with the residents of the county, of the valley, to say, you know, we've got you back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move it up this time. Hi, my name is Logan Harvey, 527 Marano Drive. So we began this meeting by standing and saluting a symbol, the American flag. It's a symbol of unity, of collectiveness, and of our nation here. And I think a lot of the council members' questions were kind of pointed at the fact that this is already in effect policy for the Sonoma Police Department. But symbols matter. And if we're looking at trying to solve for some of the unrest and some of the concerns that our citizens have here, I think it's important that we, we be symbolic. Additionally, I have some questions about this. Our Sonoma County Sheriff recently met with Attorney General Jeff Sessions. That may have been just a normal procedural meeting of a new administration coming in. And I know the, the police chief mentioned that in 13 years, this has never happened, no policy's ever changed, but that was under the Obama administration, the end of the Trump administration, or the Bush administration, and neither of those people referred to all Mexican immigrants as rapists or bad hombres. Policy is under review annually, so I guess my question to you, sir, is, is what happens if policy changes? What happens if the sheriff policy changes? And would that end up with a canceling of the contract between our city and the sheriff's department? Can we make a commitment, at the very least, that a policy change along these lines would ultimately end in us or end that contract? Additionally, I would like to know and have a discussion about what happens if an individual sheriff chooses to reach outside the lines. I'm not sure of the political beliefs or views of our sheriffs in general as individuals, but they could absolutely overstep those bounds. Can we be assured that those people will be fired immediately without pay should they step outside the lines and pass on immigration information to ICE? These are not, I mean, we talk a lot about vineyards and hotel rooms and dishes, but these are people, and that's why it's important. These are human beings, they're our friends, they're our neighbors. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask your questions at the end.
I live at 857 Verano Avenue. Excuse me, excuse me for being emotional. I'm a psychologist. I've looked at what we've done in this country throughout the years. There are so many good things, and there are some things that are not so good. Sometimes we have laws that are, that are not so good. And right now, we're on the verge of being a neo-Nazi country. We're on the verge of giving the KKK and all the other hate groups legitimacy. Unfortunately, with the way our electoral system is and the way all the vested interests are, this happened. The real question that I have to the council, and I just moved here in 2000, my wife and I moved here in 2011. We're happy to be here, and one of the reasons I like being here is because we're a diverse And I hope that within yourselves, and I understand, I've worked with, with police, with psychiatrists, with all officials. I've worked in a prison. I've worked for the Department of Social Service in the past. And it really takes a lot of courage on the part of those of us who are not affected. I'm not affected, except in my emotions. I'm not affected, except in my emotions. I hope that you have the courage to stand up to laws that are getting down the road to being the kind of country that I don't want to live in. I hope you have the courage, and that's what I would say. I won't go into any diagnosis about the person we elected president.[625.29][625.29](laughter) But as somebody who's quite familiar with the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual, we have a problem.[634.29][634.29](laughter) And the problem, the problem isn't to the immigrants. The immigrants can go back to Latin America and other places. The problem is to the rest of us. And the real risk that we have in this country of what might happen, I wish that you would make me feel at home by declaring that this is a sanctuary city and that we don't do the Nazi thing. And the parallels are far too, I studied it extensively, the psychology of the German people during the '30s, and the psychology of the American people who didn't accept the Jews into this country at that point. And we're still having problems.
About ten more seconds.
Please make it a sanctuary city, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Hundley and council, sorry, just briefly, I just walked out for a moment. We're having a little bit of sound difficulties in the back, so I just want folks to know if we close the door, the sound will be better in the outside lobby. However, speaking of folks out there, they would rather have the door open so they feel part of the conversation. But I just want people, everyone, to know, we'll leave the door open. The sound is as good as it's going to get. I think it'd be very helpful for people, whether it's council and staff or a member of the public coming up to the mic, please speak into the microphone so that it is clear based on the noise issues we're having. Thank you.
Thank you. And if anyone back there would like a place to sit, there's a couple seats in the back on this side. There's two seats up front here, if anybody wants to come closer. All right, thank you.
My name is Celeste Wenders. I live on Johnson Avenue in Sonoma Valley, and while I don't live in the city limits, I certainly spend a great deal of money in them. So I would like, and my bank is in the city limits, so my money's all there, too.[763.12][763.12](laughter) I'm also unapologetically Muslim, and I want to speak up for our immigrant community because right now, they're the target, but perhaps my family is next. And while I've had many friends say that will register with you, I want to be clear that I'm not registering for anything, and our current administration can write that down. But I do have some real concerns here, and I want the city council to use very strong language in the adoption of this statement. I don't want it to be loose, kind of huggy kumbaya language. I want it to be very firm, because we have to make a firm statement. And while I have deep respect for Chief Sackett and a wonderful working relationship with him, I respectfully disagree that Sheriff Freitas is reasonable. I think he's incredibly unreasonable. Our taxpayer dollars recently sent him to Washington where he met with Attorney General Sessions, a historically known bigot who has a horrendous track record in civil rights in this nation. He met with him before he was even being confirmed, and he's been deliberately vague about his commitment to our attorney general. And I want to be very clear that should policies change, should our sheriff change his stance in how he wants things done regarding immigration, that our city is very clear on our expectations, and should those expectations waver, that perhaps we rethink our contract with Sonoma County Sheriff. We owe it to our community. We owe it to all of our community. I think that it's very, very important that we not just talk about our immigrant community in terms of them as a labor force. I think that we all know that. What we have to talk about our immigrant community as people. These are our neighbors. These are our friends. These are my children's friends. This is who they go to school with. These are the parents that I'm in PTO meetings with and that I'm at fundraisers. These are the people I play soccer with in the park. These are the, my neighbors. This is my community. I don't want to suddenly see some of them gone. And we have to be very, very clear about that. We can't be vague. We can't be loose with the language. We can't be afraid to take a stand, because this is going down in history. You're going on record, and you need to choose which side of history that you want to be on. And do you want to hang out in the middle on the fence? Or do you want to take a very real stand and say that every single person in this community matters? Every single person in this community is important, and that you represent every single member of this community, whether they have documentation or not, and that we're not going to ask them for it? I don't ask my friends for the documentation. But I will go on record that should they need somewhere to hide, they know where to find me.[922.57][922.57](applause) Thank you.[925.38][925.38](applause)
Good evening. My name is Mario Castillo. I am with, with everybody, it seems. So tonight, I want to, I'm not exactly sure, as a Latino, I'm not exactly sure if I should be grateful, if I should be thankful for all the, or how people have expressed about Latinos. Actually, I kind of appreciate it, but not, because I feel that some of them, like Celeste, have spoken really highly of us as people, not just as servants of this community, but as people who provide, who have been living in this community for years. I've been in this community for 27 years. And in fact, if we continue to be servants of this community, it's because we have not been given the opportunity to be something more than that. That, that's painful. We want to be more than that in this community. We want to be seen more. And then yet, they want to keep on throwing us under, back to the shadows. That's not fair, you know? So, thank you for thinking of us, you know, for appreciating the work that we do, but we are more than that. There's teachers. I don't work, I don't do, I don't work in the fields. I used to. I learned to speak English. You know, I'm getting an education. I currently work in family advocacy. So, I can treat, you know, I have really, I bring myself up, right? There's tons of people who are doing exactly the same thing, but they continue to be put on this sort of, you know, sort of a corner, box, whatever it is, where they're just servants of this community. So you can make a statement where you actually see us as people, as human beings, and that would be great. A lot of you do great things in the community. I have seen some of you hold a rainbow flag. Some of you have been with us, you know, at the plaza during the Women's March. Some of you says that they share a Latino heritage. Well, this is the time. This is the time to actually show that you value the Latino community and many other races as human beings. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Robbins, R-O-B-B-I-N-S. I live at 19167 Robinson Road here in the city of Sonoma. I'm a representative tonight of North Bay Jobs with Justice, and it won't happen here, but I speak for myself and many people who live in our city when I say that I'm scared. Scared for democracy, scared for myself, scared for my fellow citizens, and my fellow residents. Recent executive orders are racist. Father Reverend Pater mentioned that there's an executive order, or I'm mentioning, that authorizes immigration officers to remove any foreigner they suspect poses a risk to public safety. What does that mean? As Reverend Pater said, it doesn't mean that the 300,000 illegal Irish immigrants in this country will be stopped. It doesn't mean that I will be stopped either. They also, the executive orders also remove constitutional rights that, in my opinion, are, in my understanding, are applied to any and all citizens, and all persons, sorry, I'm using citizens, all persons on the U.S. soil, visitors and permanent residents alike. And we know that those executive orders include removal of any person who's been convicted of any criminal offense, not just the serious or violent ones. The statute of limitations doesn't exist in that provision, so anyone who has committed of, anyone who was convicted of an offense years ago, any simple offense even, is subject to being deported. And they can be charged, anyone who's been charged with a criminal offense, even when their charges have not been proven, can be deported. In other words, guilty until proven innocent. Our constitutional rights are being eroded by these executive orders. California law says that law enforcement does not have, cannot be conscripted, as I understand it, to serve as an immigration or federal immigration authority. But the executive order says that local law enforcement can be conscripted. That's against the Tenth Amendment. So we ask that there be a resolution that doesn't allow such conscription. We ask that you support SB 54. We ask that you request that the sheriff implement the request of Eolero, not to send notifications, and other things that are on our list. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1287.71][1287.71](applause)
I'm Dave Ransom, R-A-N-S-O-M. I live in Santa Rosa. I go to church in Sonoma, Sonoma United Methodist, where I am a member of the Spiritual Action Group. I hope the council will vote tonight to discuss the resolution recommending the city to safeguard the civil rights, safety, and dignity of all our residents. That's more than just immigrants, of course. This morning's papers reported that Trump has begun to target LBGTQs, and my Jewish college roommate lives in Missouri, where the Jewish cemetery was desecrated over the weekend. But immigrants are the primary focus here and now. These are the times that try men's and women's souls. It is heartening to see how widely and strongly folks in this county and state have rallied behind our immigrant friends and neighbors in their time of fear and anxiety. Don't you appreciate this set of residents? We are turning to the state and local government with problems you never expected to face, asking for solutions you may be hard-put to provide. Passing a resolution to recommit the city to its fundamental principles is an important step. Holding a public discussion of that is important to the development of a united and dedicated community. How many of us know, for instance, that for all practical purposes, it is impossible for Mexicans to immigrate legally to the United States? And it is important for us to do what we can to limit local law enforcement's participation in federal deportation. Clearly, unless he sends in the troops, Trump's plans to arrest our neighbors and dump them across the border depend on commandeering local police to help do so. But to be realistic, we have to hope for the best and prepare for the worst. Trump's purpose is to divide and conquer, and he has directed his first blow at what he thinks is the weakest link in the American community. If we are not to be routed, we must plan our retreat. So safeguarding the civil rights, safety, and dignity of all our residents may mean, among other things, educating our community, citizens and non-citizens and citizens alike on their legal rights, making legal representation available, and helping our lawyers prepare for a job most of them have not done before, preparing for family separation, and taking care of kids who are left behind, preparing for the trauma we will all go through if this happens, Anglo and Latino alike. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1470.01][1470.01](applause)
Hello, my name is Juan Hernandez. I'm the executive director of La Luz. I do not live here in Sonoma, but we work with a lot of clients that live here in Sonoma. I just want to say that I have a great respect for Sheriff Sackett. He's been very, very responsive to all the needs that we've asked for him. About a week ago, we had heard rumors of there was a raid in Sonoma, and we contacted Sheriff Sackett, and Sheriff Sackett was responsive. He sent his sergeant over to make sure that the rumors were either, he wanted to know what those rumors were. And so I just want to say that we do have a very responsive sheriff. That's all I'm saying, is want to acknowledge that. I don't know, I do not know the details of the legality of what Sheriff Sackett is bound to or not to. I just, I'm also learning about that. But one of the things that we could do is really help him, because what's happening is if we don't, some people say this is a gesture of becoming a sanctuary city, but this is a gesture that resonates through the high school, through the middle school, through the elementary schools, and into the preschools. I also want to add one thing, that this is not the first time that we, the Latino community has been attacked here in the United States. We have the repatriation of the 1930s. You have Operation Webback of the '40s and the '50s. You have the INS raids of the '80s. You have Prop 187, Prop 209 of the '90s. You have Obama's increase in getting people arrested and deported. So this is not the first time that Latino community has faced some kind of a pressure. Secondly, I just want to say that the difference is this, we're not living in the '30s, we're not living in the '40s, we're not living in the '50s, the '80s, and the '90s. We're living in the present time where we have more people of conscience, like yourself, sitting at the table today. So we have to make a decision. What are you guys going to act on? What are you guys going to do? The community is looking at you guys, and we're expecting a result. Thank you.
Thank you.[1609.51][1609.51](applause)
David Iker, Boyce Hot Springs. I live up in the Springs, and I love the diversity, and I love the culture that's there. But it distresses me to hear that some of my neighbors may be hiding in their houses and not wanting to go outside. They're afraid they're going to get picked up and deported. That really distresses me. And I want the city council to, as most have said, in the strongest terms, support the idea of the sanctuary city. Let the community know that we have their backs. We're thinking of them. We don't want them to be afraid. We want them to be able to go on with their lives, and that's really the best, not just for them, but for everyone in the community. Because if, you know, if you're afraid to go outside, if you're afraid to contact the police if you're a victim of a crime, if someone, you know, steals your saw out of the back of your house and you don't report that, then that harms the entire community. So please do, in the strongest terms, say that you support the ideas of the sanctuary city, that you support this community. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Donnelly from 578 Seventh Street West, and I'm here to support almost everything anybody said tonight, especially what Fred Alabac and Claudia Robbins have put forward to you, along with many others. I'll just add a little note of historical perspective. I was driving by the plaza, and you know, we celebrate, this is a city that celebrates the Bear Flag Rebellion, where a lot of Anglos rode into this Mexican territory undocumented and tried to take it over, but they didn't have to wait long, because the United States, as you know, declared war on Mexico and stole the rest of California from Mexico. So we have an option of even giving this back to Mexico, and all the immigrants from Mexico would be legal and we'd be illegal.[1748.01][1748.01](laughter) Or you can remedy this historic injustice and make us a sanctuary city, really remedy , we've not even unjust to the Native Americans in this country through theft and so forth. But certainly, we could do this here, and it would be pretty hypocritical if we continue to celebrate the Bear Flag Rebellion and reenact it, if you can't make this a sanctuary city. So I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Hank Martenson. I live at 472 Fourth Street East. Thanks for having this meeting tonight, mayor. Ever since I was old enough to know I was gay, I wondered how certain Jews in Germany knew to leave, and I'm asking And I'm asking myself that question now. And while we're talking tonight mostly about Latinos, it was nice to hear the Muslim lady talk. And I want, I don't speak on behalf of the gay community, but I do want to say that this, as a member of a hated minority, this is terrifying times. And I want to say to you that make whatever you do as strong and as powerful and as loud as you can possibly do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Huntley, council members. I'm Steve Barboz. I live at 461 Patton Street. It's been a while since I've been down here. I remember fondly many times sitting on the dais, and since I've been off, there haven't been too many times when I wished I was still up there, but this is one of them. We are living in frightening times. Bold, decisive, clear action is needed. It's very important what small communities do. We need to stand shoulder to shoulder with all of those cities who have stood up and become sanctuary cities. I think Jason Walsh's editorial in today's IT said it pretty clearly. I've myself vacillated on how important it is to actually be a sanctuary city, if you're going to adopt the safeguards that have been promoted as part of that package. But I think it's important to go all the way. I don't think there's going to be any loss of funding. If you read Thomas Elias's column in today's paper, he pretty much addresses that, that's a lot of bluster, and there's not much fire there. It's meant to intimidate and frighten people like you and like other cities across the country. You need to stand up. We, as a community, need to stand up, and you need to be our voice and adopt a bold resolution on this issue and protect these important members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Sarah Ford, 380 East Napa Street, Sonoma. Just a quick word, I hadn't planned on speaking, but here's a perspective. I agree with so much that's already been said, I won't repeat it. I tutor many, many children in the Sonoma Valley Unified School District from elementary through high school. And in case you missed the school board meeting, where children were in tears, terrified, some so emotional, like me right now, they couldn't speak. These kids are really scared. Yes, many of them have undocumented parents. And these are bright, eager, hard-working kids. Their only home they've ever known is Sonoma. Can you imagine being in your childhood home and being worried about suddenly being deported to a country you didn't even know? So, it's just a perspective to have as you consider this decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom Conlon here, on behalf of Transition Sonoma Valley tonight. And briefly, I appreciate you putting this on the agenda. I appreciate the staff putting together the supplemental report. I don't know if it was addressed before I got here tonight, but I was disappointed with some, what I thought were missing components of the supplemental report. I hope you've had a chance to look at SB 54 and talk to our legislators who are deliberating over this right now. I don't believe this should be in front of you. It should be at the state level, it should be at the federal level. We should not be having to deal with this. However, it is in front of us tonight. We must deal with it, and we should be reinforcing the relationship between our police and our community, not driving a wedge. And that's what the federal government is doing right now. So, I encourage you to reinforce our local defenses and take this matter very seriously. Thank you.
Bob Edwards, 310 East Napa Street in Sonoma. Let me start by saying I second everything everybody has said. I think that it's imperative that council move forward with this project, and I say "project" in a very respectful way, because I think it's the kind of thing that will require a lot of thinking. There's a lot of other people to get involved in this project besides the city. The Chamber of Commerce comes to mind. Many people have mentioned the economic basis of this issue in our community. The Chamber of Commerce needs to step up. They get $125,000 a year from the city. They need to step up. We need to get the school districts involved and work with them on whatever kind of a project you decide to construct. I want to say that I'm willing to volunteer to be on any committee that you want, such as my shabby legal background in immigration. But I've read the order, the executive orders, I've read the implementation memos that have come out, and it's really pretty startling to call it fascism is not an exaggeration. But I think that the council and the community acting together with other entities such as the school district, I mentioned the Chamber of Commerce, the nonprofits who frequently come to council for donations, I think we need to coordinate with them. But I would suggest that council establish an ad hoc committee that can move quickly and still get public input, pull all these resources together, and come out with a game plan that would be, that the city would be proud of, and that our entire community can feel reassured by. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's left for public comment?
Hello, thank you, Mayor, very much for bringing this to our attention. My name is Ellen LaBrus. I live at 1295 East MacArthur Street. I was the past Executive Director of La Luz for nine years, and I'm pleased to be here today to tell you, as a private citizen, how I feel. I urge you to consider the resolution and reaffirm the policy of adhering to the California Trust Act. This work by the sheriff's department has been very helpful for members of the Latino community. The professional relationship that we've had has been wonderful. But what we're talking about here is an issue of trust. If we do not take a stand for immigrants in our community, we will run the risk of destroying the relationship that many in our community have worked so hard to build. If this happens, if all members of our community don't feel that they are safe from arbitrary search and seizure, the consequences are very, very serious. Parents will be afraid to send their kids to school. Victims and witnesses of crimes will be afraid to come forward and testify or to give information that will help law enforcement solve the crimes that happen. Those who have chronic illnesses or communicable diseases will be reluctant to go to any public health facility for fear that they could be picked up at any time. This is a humanitarian issue, and it's also a public health and a public safety issue. So, I urge you not to drive these folks, these one-third of our community, our friends and our neighbors, back into the shadows. It's very, very hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Janet Engelbrecht, E-N-G-E-L-B-R-E-C-H-T. I'm at 990 First Street West here in Sonoma, and I want to thank you for bringing this important topic up for public comment. I don't really have anything prepared to say, except that I agree with everything everyone has said. We need to take a stand here in Sonoma. It can't be wishy-washy, you know? And if you need guidance, look at what other cities have done, how they've prepared their statements, how they're working with law enforcement, with healthcare and education and so on. You don't have to reinvent the wheel necessarily, but I do think we need to be supportive of our immigrant community and our LGBTQ community, other religions that aren't Christian or Jewish, but our Muslim brothers and sisters as well. So, thank you very much for doing this tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I wasn't prepared to talk, but my name is Sandra Solana. I live on 18470 Happy Lane. I'm a resident here. My husband's a schoolteacher here in the town of Sonoma. I'm also a schoolteacher, but in the town of Petaluma. And I urge you to make a strong statement for the children of Sonoma. I think it's important that you care about their well-being, because they are stressed out, and they are concerned about their parents not being there. So, sorry. And you can see it at school. And I'm also a child of immigrants. My parents came here. They are now legal. They are now citizens. I am also a citizen. I was born here. I went to school, was educated. I became a teacher, and so did my husband. He's from here originally. He brought me here. I love this community. I'm happy that my children will grow up in this community. It's a wonderful town, and I'm so proud of all these people here tonight. And I hope that you make a statement and support all those other children that will grow up here, will go to college, and might come back here and support Sonoma, just like my husband did, and just like I come here and I support the community of Sonoma County. Thank you.
Thank you.
I bow before you, Marilyn.
Well, age before beauty. My name is Marilyn Good, and I'm so delighted that you're doing this, and I want you to do it with all heart and soul. I grew up in San Francisco, and I remember the Japanese children being taken away. And it's, suddenly, what you thought was freedom is gone, and it goes like that. And if we don't take a stand, and really take a stand, I didn't like the, whatever the other name they did, whether it's Sebastopol or somewhere, I think sanctuary sounds better, to tell you the truth, and all that kind of waffling that's been going around a few other towns in our beautiful county. But I do believe that we take for granted so much of what we consider, and it's terribly eroded at this point. And we've been such a bigoted country anyway throughout our history. It's time for us to really make amends with the people we love, and I love our, the Latino community. And not because they're productive or picking my grapes, but I have really close relationships with two men. I'd marry them in a minute. I'd say, they're the husbands I should have had. So, let's, you know, take a stand in our town and really be proud. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Brown, 1396 Lubec Street. I'm a first-generation American. I'm very proud to be an American. I served my country in Vietnam. I'm not as proud of that, but I'm smarter now. And I hope that you seriously, seriously think on this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Palladini, 271 Wilking Way, Sonoma. I strongly urge the council to affirm Sonoma's commitment to diversity, civil rights, and the dignified treatment of all residents by approving this resolution. In addition to being morally right, encouraging undocumented individuals to report crime and access city services makes our entire community safer. Further, city funds, our funds, should not be diverted to assist federal immigration authorities in enforcing the destructive actions of the current administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Craig Scheiner. I live at, it's S-C-H-E-I-N-E-R, 19379 RK Court. I'm a second-generation American, and if my grandparents had to go through what's happening now, and they were deported, I would not exist. I would never have been born. One thing that kind of bothers me is, in general, how Hispanics here are kind of referred to by their economic input and how they benefit us economically. If that Irish gentleman who became an American in 1975, if this was 1974, we would not be supporting him because of how much money he contributes to the community. We'd be supporting him because he is us and we are him. And that's the same way it is in this valley, that the people who work here, who live here, regardless of who they are, they are us and we are them. Just like the reason you're on that council, one of the reasons is that you live in Sonoma, and you are us, and we are you. So, you don't speak alone when you speak. We're here behind you. We have your back. We have your front, too, right now, so. This yellow sheet has seven bullet points, and all I ask you to do, one by one, is encourage, ask, convene, sponsor, support, set up, and ready. That's all. That's all. Now, a lot of us feel like we're under attack from Washington. And what do you do when you're under attack? You stand up. You fight back, and that's what I'm asking you to do.
Thank you. All right. Anybody next?
Good evening. Buenos noches. Buenos tardes. I want to know what they, see many different names up here. My name is Silver John Hall. I live west of Lamita, north of Donald, 18789 Beatrice Drive. And not to tramp on Craig's moment, but I feel like what we're looking at is compassion. And I will give you just this one thing, a poem by the late James Broughton. This is it. This is it, and I am it, and you are it, and so is that. And he is it, and she is it, and it is it, and that is that. Oh, what is this? And it is thus, it is them, it is us, and it is now, and here it is, and here we are, and this is it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if anyone wants to talk after Ms. Hermosillo, if you'll line up in the back so that we can get through these final people before we can come back for our council discussion.
Good evening. Rebecca Hermosillo, just speaking as a resident of Sonoma Valley, 645 Moline Avenue. Somebody had mentioned that our immigration system is broken, and it absolutely is. If I had a sister living in Mexico and I petitioned for her to have her come here legally, it would take 18 years. If she happened to live in the Philippines, it's 23 years. And so, our system isn't working, but we also need to, which is why people come here for a better future and a better life, but we also need to provide safety mechanisms for the people that are in our community. If I break the law as a citizen and I go to jail, Chief Sackett, please protect me and, I'm afforded a legal defense. You know, there's a due process, and if I can't afford an attorney, someone will be provided to me. And that's not what happens in the immigration courts. When you get deported, when you get taken into immigration court system, there is no attorney. So, a lot of people don't have the $15,000 that is necessary to hire an attorney. The undocumented person is really encouraged to sign this form and to be deported, but that form also permanently bars them from the U.S. So, in considering, you know, the safety mechanisms, My American Dream, a nonprofit presented to the county of Sonoma, a model that they're going to be rolling out that offers pro bono legal defense for people affected by this, the deportations by the administration. And so, I encourage the city council, whatever direction you do, to consider that as something that you might incorporate to ensure that everyone living in Sonoma Valley is afforded due process.
Thank you. Any further public comment? This is your last chance for public comment on this item.
I'd like to just say something. Is there this a list?
If you could come up to the microphones, the people on the other side of TV can hear you.
Yes, I'm Ruth Cherensen, T-J-E-R-A-N-D-S-E-N, and I live up on Ridge Road. I have, I have a woman here who is a Spanish teacher, and we are very good friends, and she sees and is very involved with the Latino community. She has given me papers. She has given me papers, these, and I, I copied some, not very many, but I have the immigrants' rights in Spanish. I also have them in English. And I'd like to give them to you and some of them. I'm going to a meeting tomorrow and pass them out tomorrow too. But this is an immigrant attorney list that can be had, uh, to be given out to, um, I don't know, in the churches, in the schools and so on. I know that this woman and her group has been going to the churches and talking with them, uh, with the, the ministers to at least have something to tell their, their community. Anyway, a list here and then a resource guide also for Latino community. In it's, let's see, this Sonoma County Resources and it's in Spanish. So these, I will give some of them to you. Maybe you can make copies and spread them around the community. I think the biggest problem that we have here is that the community doesn't know what's going on. And I think there is more going on than we are aware of. Just a quick story of a man who has been here twenty years and has his painting contract and his firm. Just last week, the district attorney and one of the gentlemen from the, uh, what is it? The, the construction firm went out the first time in twenty years and checked the people that were working with him. And they told him that in that day fourteen businesses had been closed down. So I think we need to see what's going on. Anyway, papers here.
Okay, you can hand those to our city clerk and she can distribute those to us. Any further comments on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back and ask my council if they want to take a quick five-minute break. We're taking a break that's going to be exactly five minutes. To ask, um, and anyone on our panel over here who feels that they are, the authority, the authority on the question can answer. So the first questions were from Taylor Jordan. Juan, who, what, who would Sanctuary City apply to? Would include people outside of Sonoma? And if sheriff's policy already is to only deport people when they are violent or dangerous, then what does Sanctuary do and what's the point?
So I don't know the answer to that, but I just want to point a clarification. It's not the sheriff's policy to deport anybody. He does not deport. That's INS. So just for point of clarification.
So Mayor, let me, let's start with the first one. Read that one again because they are, and then we'll try to go through these.
Uh, this was, who would Sanctuary City apply to and would it include people outside of Sonoma?
So, um, let me, maybe just start with, when cities create these policies, there are certain things that they are, that happen. And some things that are within a sanctuary city and there's no formal definition, there's no formal rule. But one, one item is that you're not requiring any proof of legal immigration status to access city services. We're not doing that already. You're not questioning crime victims or witnesses about their immigration status. We're not doing that already. Limiting the cities' cooperation with federal authorities, the enforcement of any federal immigration. You know, Chief Sackett laid out where there are some very clear lines where they don't and then where, um, unlimited dangerous situations where they would. So it's a little hard to say. I mean, we are only in control of our little, kind of our two-mile boundary here in terms of what we would be putting in place. Anyone who moved within our jurisdiction, but I think we have to be a little careful sometimes. You know, what, what we would do would be pertaining to what happens within our community. But once someone would leave our incorporated boundaries, different rules would apply potentially. So, um, I think that's kind of as much as I can answer on that one in terms of anything official.
Thank you. And I'm going to move on to Fred Alabak's question. Would SB fifty-four stop fingerprint sharing? Does anyone here have enough knowledge on SB fifty-four?
So I'm not an expert on SB fifty-four. Um, I know it's working its way through the legislature. My understanding from reading parts of it is in essence, it's, uh, that we will not, uh, local law enforcement or state law enforcement will not cooperate at all with the federal authorities. So, uh, one, that would be not to exert any, um, local resources. So that would yet to be determined what that exactly looks like in terms of, um, if that would stop fingerprinting.
Thank you. And our last ques- last two questions, but I'll ask them together and they're going to be for you, Chief Sackett. It was from Logan Harvey. What happens if the sheriff's policy changes in a way that is inconsistent with our community values? I guess that could also be Kathy. And what happens if a sheriff oversteps?
So I think in the, the first, um, question in terms of the sheriff's policies change outside of our community standards, uh, that would be, um, um, first of all, I don't necessarily s- s- see what that would actually come into play, but if it was hypothetically, then of course, as the contract, you know, expels out, that the sheriff and the city manager would sit down to talk about where the discrepancies and the differences are and see if they can work out some type of reasonable solution that would be okay for both parties. If they can't, then, um, the contract defaults back to the sheriff being the subject matter expert and his policy would stand.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up on a couple of things?
Sure.
Um, because there, I thought there were some other questions that I, I would like to get to.
Please.
So, and it didn't really, um, come up in the form of a question, but it was certainly in there about, uh, working with Iolero. I think that was Fred Alabak's comments. Iolero is a independent auditor, independent law enforcement auditor outreach coordinator. I'm not even sure what it stands for exactly. But it's Jerry Treat. He is a new, um, uh, government department at the county. We have worked with him twice already, as a matter of fact, since the election. We have been in at least three public meetings that dealt specifically with this issue. Once at La Luz, which Juan made reference to. We have been twice to El Verano School, once in kind of a large policy meeting where, um, the, um, independent auditor Jerry came out, introduced himself, and I was there. A lot of the questions were about policy, much of what we've discussed here today. There was a follow-up meeting to that. That was called the Community Engagement Circles and that was in February this year, a couple of weeks ago. I did not attend that. It's, uh, the, the purpose behind the engagement circles is really about deputies and line staff interacting with community members. It was well-attended. Uh, I thought there were some very good questions. Uh, the feedback I received from people is that that was a very positive experience. And so when it goes to, uh, the comments have been made by many people and I completely concur. It's really about trust. And so the more that we can, we can get into the community and have these meetings and reaffirm what our positions are and that who we are as individuals and as people, it goes a long ways, I think, to building trust and respect. And I think, uh, will help belie a lot of the fear. We desperately need the community to trust us and to believe in us so that we can effectively provide safe neighborhoods for them. And so that's part of it. So in addition to those meetings, we've had at least, since the election, at least one coffee with a cop here in town, well-attended. Um, and from that spurred a new program that we're really excited about is, uh, over at, the Alternative School, Creekside. They decided to invite us over for pizza with the police. And so we've gone down there and we've had pizza with them. And this is just a phenomenal group of kids that have had probably some negative interactions with us and they, they're warming up, hey, you guys are cool dudes. And we hang out, we chat. And so the ball's in our court. We're going to be inviting them up to us, um, to kind of keep that conversation going. And so I really think that's where the real power of, of relationships go. And we don't always get it right, but amazingly, we get it right far more than we don't. And, uh, and we not, we accept that. And so that's really what it is, you know, for me. As a matter of fact, I think next week there is another meeting at Hannah Boys Center called Know Your Rights. And I plan to be there as well. I hope it'll be well-attended. It will be another opportunity. It's not necessarily a meeting for us, so I will just be a respectful spectator in case someone has questions. But I do know that La Luz has been running around handing out these little red cards, which I'm, I'm supportive of and I have a copy and our deputies know about it. And so we will continue to work with, with La Luz and with the Family Resource Center at El Verano to, to really embed ourselves as close as we can with the community to try to develop the relationships that are, are necessary to hopefully, um, like I said, set aside some of the, some of the fears.
Could you explain what the red card is?
So, uh, the red card is basically, it says Know Your Rights and it's, um, both in English and Spanish. And it was handed to, um, to me from, from Juan and I think La Luz has been handing them out. I don't, uh, there are some La Luz members here, but, uh, they've been handing them out to the people who come in, into La Luz so that they understand, uh, what, what their rights are. Our deputies are aware of it. And so if someone were to give it to us, I'm not necessarily sure it would, uh, sometimes we just have to ask questions like, you know, why'd you run the stop sign? But you still have to communicate with us. But once in a while, um, this is good to know and so we support that. And that'll probably be a discussion at the meeting next, uh, next week at Hannah.
Thank you.
So Mayor, just one other question I think that we didn't answer. There was a question of, I, I think the question was if, if an individual deputy sheriff maybe breaks policy or something. I think it's important to know and, and Chief Sackett can expound more, but, you know, in the world of law enforcement, there are these, there are very clear policies. There's, um, there are, um, when there, there's clear patterns of accountability. And so when, um, a deputy sheriff or any member of a police department or a sheriff breaks a policy, there's an internal affairs review. It's evaluated. There, the appropriate level of discipline is conducted. And so, um, there's, and both the employee has rights and yet there's also accountability based on the agency. So those are fairly, you know, I think any violation of this immigration violation policy that is written would be treated in the same way as violations in any other kind of department policy.
Uh, that's absolutely correct. Sorry, I didn't follow up on that. But, um, yeah, so we have very, very clear, um, performance standards, policies, procedures, and we hold our, um, our deputies accountable to, to uphold those. And when they don't, uh, which thank goodness is very rare, but when, when they don't meet the expectations, they are held accountable for that, up to including termination. I think, um, it has made the local paper. There was one sheriff's deputy who, you know, I think stepped out of bounds and so he is, was terminated. And, um, so in, in the added advantage for the city of Sonoma is that I have complete control on who works in the city of Sonoma. And so even if a deputy doesn't step outside the bounds, but they just don't seem to be the right fit, then there's no personnel action. I just have the authority to transfer that person back to somewhere else and find someone who I think would serve this community better, uh, which is a huge advantage for, I think, the, the contract model. Secondly, uh, and it's been brought up several times, um, I think it's key, the discussion's about compassion. And I, I want to reaffirm to everybody here, I mean, we have a mission statement like many agencies do and, and agencies spend a lot of time putting together mission statements about what is the culture of their department. And I will say in our mission statement, we have two very strong words. One is compassion and the other is fairness. And that we will carry those out with both integrity and respect. And so those are, are things that are printed on the wall in our office. If you come to the front counter, you can see it printed on the wall next to our copier, uh, which is kind of the central hub. And I expect and I hold the deputies accountable to live up to those standards each and every day, including myself.
Thank you. So bringing this back to the council for discussion, we have two, uh, potential decisions to make. The first is whether this is a path that we want to pursue as far as, uh, creating a resolution, and the agenda is to affirm the city of Sonoma's commitment to diversity and to safeguarding the civil rights, safety and dignity of all of our residents. And if so, this is something that, that, um, a majority of the council is interested in doing, then we can define, uh, the scope of what we would like it to say or maybe some themes. And then we can also, uh, talk about how we would want it drafted. I do have a few more comments I'd like to make before I turn it over to my, my peers. But I think that Sonoma, even before this recent national shift with immigration that has caused, uh, the current conversation, I think that the city of Sonoma, and by the city, I mean the, the community that lives inside the city limits, could be better about being more inclusive and being more supportive and brasive, embracing of our diverse residents here and our diverse neighbors right outside the city limit. So I think that especially now in light of the national conversation, that it is time to stand up and be counted as a community that values everyone that's here, um, that recognizes that everyone has a place and a contribution. And while it's true, some people do make economic arguments, but I prefer to look at it as more of a, a human argument. And the way that I see this issue and the why I think it's important to look, to talk about it as a local level is, you know, it might be up to the feds to set immigration policy, but at the local level, we are the ones that are directly, uh, touching people's welfare and health and community. And communities list, uh, exist at a local level and that is why it is for us to make sure that we have a healthy community. And I think that when people in your community are living in fear, um, I, I, it, when they're living in fear and when they don't feel supported, I think that that can erode community and lead to a, lead to a toxic environment. So I would like to, um, pers- pursue this resolution. Uh, one of the things from the comments that I really liked was, a, a few people talked about kids and the significance that something like this can have for our kids, is that I think it's important for all of them to grow up somewhere where they, uh, feel that they live in a community that values and supports them. And I also wanted to point out, uh, so a couple of things that the county has done recently. Uh, because of the way the city and the unincorporated areas are sometimes indistinguishable and because our police force is intimately tied to the counties, I think it's significant, significant what the county is doing. So two weeks ago, they approved a resolution stating their commitment to serving all residents regardless of immigration status. They also, uh, decided to send a letter in support of SB fifty-four. And, uh, and so then last night, they, um, voted to support the SB fifty-four and they agreed to extend a county program that provides legal support for children facing deportation. And they're also working on initiative that, uh, to ensure county services used by immigrants are as effective as possible. So they're doing a number of things and I think they have more that are cooking up. But two weeks ago, they did a resolution. I think that because we are sometimes inseparable from the county, that we should step up and do the same. So who would like to go first? Councilwoman Harrington.
Well, I'm very enthused to see so many people here tonight. I think that the discussion which has come up around, uh, the election of Donald Trump is a long time in coming and that the immigration deportation crisis is hardly new. Between two thousand nine and twenty fifteen, two point five million people were deported. And I think we can all remember the scenes of Central American children sleeping on the floor, waiting to find a place in this country. So while people are, uh, certainly paying more attention now, uh, this is an issue that has been going on for so long and I am touched that, uh, this is the start of it. Whether or not issuing a resolution has any, uh, uh, significant impact other than psychological, which is important, psychological safety is an important factor. Certainly, I don't know. I'm going to support the resolution. I like the idea of forming an ad hoc committee so that members of the public and members of the city council are interested in crafting it, can do that together and put some time into that. I think that's a good idea. But I also want to say that with regard to long-lasting impact, which is the desire instead of symbolic impact, that that has to do with, you know, affordable housing and high-quality education and nutrition and good jobs. And all of those things are things that we need to continue to work on in order to make, uh, long-lasting change because the key, uh, I think, I think most people come to this country for a better life for themselves and their families. And that if we want to support them, uh, probably the thing that's the most important to them is that we, uh, create opportunities for the young people that are here to grow and succeed and to partake in everything that's wonderful about being an American and give them the opportunities about being an American, and give them the opportunities that they deserve. So I know that certainly I'm committed to working on those things, and I hope that people who are here tonight also contribute their time and talent to working on that as well.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
So, my family immigrated here in 1646, and they got tired of the persecution in England and Ireland and Scotland and that area, and Norway, et cetera. So, so we've been here a long time, and Pather, who, I don't know if he's still here, but, yeah, Pather, good friend. So I worked in Boston for four years, spent four years there, had a business there. And I think there's more than 300,000 illegal Irish aliens, and there were just in Boston alone, so.
[laughter]
Anyhow, and we got along very well, and we all worked together just fine and what have you. But I'm a little bit taken aback by Mayor Hunley when you said that people aren't necessarily committed to people here. We, I just, Councilmember Harrington and I both attended the Boys and Girls Club event. I think they raised three-quarters of a million dollars for the kids at the Boys and Girls Club in the Sonoma Valley. So I think this community is super committed to.
I think I said inclusive.
Well, I think they're pretty inclusive, too. About three-quarters of a million dollars was raised, and when I see that, the kind of activity and the commitment that people in this community have in the voter turnout that we had, I think our voter turnout here was something like 89 percent. And to me, that's fantastic. I mean, let's keep it, let's keep it going, and let's try to get 100 percent. I'm in favor of, I like the wording that's here right now. And because I think that's what we're doing, I try to do that every day myself. The work I'm doing, our Rotary Club, where there's four of us going down in Nicaragua, we just committed $20,000 to build a new learning center in a community there. This will be my fourth trip. I believe it's, we have to continue to commit to education, 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 especially with the young people. My kids are both just beginning to learn Spanish. I think it's imperative that they do. And I don't believe my kids see color. I mean, that's, that's how we live in our life. And I think that we're a very inclusive family, and we try to act that way. I cook the community dinner every year, and I have a great staff of chefs that work for, they're from all backgrounds. So it's, it's something, I feel like I'm involved in it every day. I spoke with Jason Carter just a few minutes ago. You know, I don't, the word sanctuary, it's, you know, it's, I'm not worried about federal funds and all that kind of stuff where, you know, in fact, if the Chase Street Bridge didn't get built, it'd be fine with me. It'd make a great cul-de-sac. But it's, I don't believe that, you know, I like the wording that Mayor Hunley came up with here, you know, safeguarding, you know, reaffirming, maybe not, we're reaffirming our commitment to our community. And that's, I love those kind of words, and I'd be happy with an ad hoc committee, or whatever committee the rest of the council decides. But I think, you know, poking somebody in the eye with the word sanctuary doesn't make any sense, because it's, it's, there's politicians, I got a note from Congressman Huffman about speaking out against the president, and I said, "Why don't you fix Highway 37, and then I'll talk to you about the president?" And that's, that's how I feel. When people talk to me about my opinion about the election and the results, you know, I care very deeply about what goes on in this country, but I really care about what's going on right here. And that's why I'm open to being part of this. But I think when people say, "Well, what are you going to do?" I says, "I'm just going to take care of the plaza. I'm going to continue doing all the things that I do, my Rotary Club and my school and my kids, and just keep doing it." That's, I think that's what we should all be doing. And I think that's all my, all my notes that I have here. But, you know, I'm going to continue. We should all have, our home should be our sanctuary, right, and for our neighbors. And it's great to see, you know, our community here, our community from the Springs, our Hispanic community. This is, this is the most colorful our audience has been in a long time, and I really appreciate it. And I would hope to see that our council becomes that as well. So I'll leave it at that, and looking forward to hearing from the rest of the council.
Councilmember Cook.
Well, I'll start out by saying that I've been serving on the council for five years, and I always talk about local control. And I know that I've had a lot of discussions with the past city manager, Carol Givinato, starting to have conversations with Kathy Capriola, our new city major, about local control. The reason I talk about local control so much is because of what is happening in our country today. As elected official of the city of Sonoma, I have a lot of grassroots, you, somebody said that, you know, being elected official on the city council, we have Sonoma, Sonoma has our back. But in reality, we're still a small city that's a couple miles by a couple miles. I liked what Gary said. I think that one thing is a feel-good resolution. Maybe it doesn't have a lot of meat to it, but in reality, it does, because it reaffirms what Sonoma is about. I remember I was the first mayor who actually put the gay rights flag on City Hall. The press came down, took a picture, and I went home and I just looked at my email screen, just waiting for a lot of negative. I got zero. Everything was positive. That's Sonoma. And here we are, talking about what are we going to do? Number one thing that Sonoma needs to do, and the residents of Sonoma, is what Chief Sackett and what a lot of people have talked about tonight, is we need to get rid of the misinformation. I work in an industry that is 100 percent Hispanic. Maybe it's 99.8 because there's me and a few others. And I liked what one of the speakers said, who usually doesn't speak too good when he talks about me, but what he said was so true. A lot of us talk about economics, and I think we're sending the wrong message to them that, you know, about house cleaners and about, you know, they're the ones that are doing all of our work. They're human beings. I know a lot of vineyard managers, I know a lot of wineries, I know a lot of people who employ these Hispanic workers, who consider them their friends, their family. That is a message that we need to just not even talk about. I mean, I wish the press would not even talk about what, having life without an immigrant, because I think that that is just almost a racist slur, because these are human beings that offer a lot. I know half the, half the people that work in the vineyards know more about viticulture than I do. I just, I just show up and, you know, they're out there. They're out there nine, 10 hours a day. And there's big issues with immigration. I live with it every day. I want to be on this ad hoc. I don't know if my colleagues are going to allow me to do that, but it's like Amy said, or Councilmember Harrington, this has been a problem for a long time. I think that Trump and a few things that has been said has escalated it. But if you look back in the last 40, 50 years, what's happened, it's a mess. Immigration is a mess. I deal with it every day. And I was talking to somebody the other day, we're having coffee, and talking about what, what we have to go through in agriculture, and all the misinformation that's out there and about e-Verify, and what about this. And my conversation with, with Chief Sackett today was just so important, because the city of Sonoma, we can't fix everything. But I think it's a good start. And what I would really like to do is I would like to see a resolution come to the city council for a vote that says exactly what this page says, and maybe add a little bit more in there, but get the information out there to let people know not to fear. You know, if you're an undocumented individual in Sonoma, Sonoma Valley, and God forbid, something bad happens, you call 911, and that service is going to come to you. Your house is on fire, that's, that fire truck is going to put, go there and put that fire out. And I think that the misinformation out there, a lot of people don't understand what it is, and that's why I questioned at the beginning of this so hard. Because if there's one message, is no more misinformation. I don't like to talk bad about the President of the United States. I won't. I wasn't brought up that way. The sanctuary city scares me, because if we were going to be a sanctuary city, I would actually be put in legislation that we should succeed from the U.S., because that's pretty much what you're saying, is all those tax dollars. The money that comes back from, from the federal government is our dollars. And I just really believe that a resolution to reaffirm what we're doing, and I know a lot of people want us to be a sanctuary city. I think that's a further discussion down the road, but I would definitely like to start by the resolution. And I put my name into the hat to be on the ad hoc, because I would like to leave in three more years on the council, because I'm not running for reelection on the city council. I would love to be able to check that, that box that, besides leaf blowers and a few other little things, that we were able to fix one of the biggest problems that's plagued Sonoma, the state of California, and the U.S. for the last 50 years.
Councilmember Agamonte.
Thank you. It's, it's interesting. Thank you so much to my colleagues, and especially to our mayor for just bringing this subject up, because obviously, you can tell by how many people have joined us this evening. There are others that, I think we mentioned some other large meetings we've had. You know, I think, there were so many speakers, and I'm trying to look through some of my notes. I've written down, I haven't written down everything that everyone said, but wouldn't it be great to, on this resolution, that that gentleman that was up, just, "This is it." I just thought that was the greatest thing that he said, "This is it." The other, of course, there are some people who are speakers, we've met them before, we couldn't please them with anything. I remember there was someone here for that. And, but I honestly am grateful that we're bringing this up. And there's something on this paper, the page, and I think some people, some people offered that it needs to be, make a statement of some kind. And I like the second section here where it talks about however we are aware of that, and then sponsoring, supporting Know Your Rights clinics, supporting family preparation for possible deportation, all of those. And I think La Luz has, is working now with IIBA, International Institute of the Bay Area. And I don't know that much about them. I know I've been involved, invited to their meetings, and I just haven't had a chance. But I would like possibly that to include this, this part. And I just think, you know, there are so many wonderful things here being done. And for those of you who don't venture into the plaza because you think it's so busy, I will tell you at the Basque, there's a lot of Spanish spoken. And I know that when women are saying "entonces," I know they're gossiping.
[laughter]
And so I'm so excited to hear that. And, you know, I have to say, when I, when the statement comes that this should include a council of color, how many times do I have to tell people, Mexican, Apache, Hawaiian, Portuguese? I mean, this is, I'm American. And, you know, it's so interesting, is it that nobody recognizes who I am ethnically, the ethnicity of me, because I'm educated, and I sit up here? Isn't that a shame that possibly people think like that? And, you know, I keep, I keep reminding people of that. But I, I just think this is wonderful, and I thank the mayor again for us to tackle this. I just, I don't know, I think I'm so proud to be part of this council. So how I support an ad hoc committee, I unfortunately have too many things that I'm involved with. I cannot be part of an ad hoc committee, but I do support you, David, anybody who has the desire to do this. But I think I would also like to see what the school is doing, what the county is doing. God bless the county, but you know what? A lot of those promises don't come to fruition. So I would really like to know and understand what those are. So I, I support this. I support your resolution, and hopefully we can move through this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also support having some sort of committee. I don't know if it'd be a subcommittee or an ad hoc committee. I would like for it to have the authority to meet with and consult people in the community from different groups to get their feedback on it. I want to say like the farmers market group, but I know not everyone loved the farmers market group, but similar that in the structure, it's flexible enough that they can meet as they needed and come up with it. And I would also like them to have the authority to perhaps brainstorm with this, you know, community group that comes together of, you know, perhaps other supportive programs, or perhaps things that, the education piece, or whatever, some of the things that are on this list that would not be accomplished by a resolution. But I would like to, perhaps people can brainstorm, you know, collaboration of sorts or projects, so.
Oh, I would just, with regard to the structure of an ad hoc committee, I would highly, even though it was somewhat controversial, I would highly recommend the structure we use for the farmers market, because it allowed us to engage in real-time dialogue and with a notice meeting where we could only receive a public comment but not respond to it. It's very inflexible. And so in order to have a working meeting, that meeting could be announced and held publicly so people could attend, but it would, in terms of just the mechanics of writing a document, I think it would be much simpler to have a less formal meeting where we invited the public to attend.
I agree. May I ask one more comment?
Sure.
I think our city manager, well, I won't repeat what you said to me some other time, but, you know, we have an issue with communication here. And I'd like to go beyond Facebook to tell people there's a meeting. So, en inglés y español. So, that, that's the only thing I ask.
Councilmember Cook, Vice Mayor Edwards. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You're reading my mind. So I'd like to, I think, David, you'd be an excellent choice to be on this committee in the work that you do. I think it's very important. I'd also like to recommend Jason Carter, if you want somebody from the community who's working...
Yeah, there he is, right there.
And somebody who is working with the youth and in the entire county, I think it'd be very beneficial.
[inaudible]
Knows his way around the community, so.
Counsel, in terms of structure, tonight's agenda is pretty much just a discussion. It's not set up to allow the council to take any specific action. So if the drift of the council is to create a subcommittee, then that'll be on your next agenda, and the mayor will be able to think about it a little bit and decide who she might wish to nominate. Remember, too, that if you have anybody else on this committee besides two council members, it becomes a standing committee that's subject into the Brown Act, the notice, public hearing, an agenda, and the like. And it appears that most of you don't think that's an effective way of approaching this. So in order for it to, I think, achieve the goals that a number of you expressed, it should be just two council members, and then they can choose who they want to consult with, with advice of the council for sure. But for tonight, it's pretty much discussion only. Give us directions to what you want to see at the next council meeting in terms of action items, and that will be brought back to you.
So that means that after tonight, we can't have a little group that wants to get started on this. It's got to come back to us.
You could have, you can have a meeting, you could have a small group, it just can't be two council members. So you could just have one council member take the lead, start meeting with some folks, put something together, potentially bring a draft resolution back. And then if you wanted at that meeting to form a subcommittee to look and brainstorm other initiatives or something, you could two-step it that way. That's, that's the only way to kind of move forward now.
Or could we, whoever's interested in the, is it possible?
Sorry, just one second. Quick caucus?
Sure.
Sure.
The council can't take any action tonight. If they were to just ban without taking any action tonight, two of them, just on their own, it's, it's not gonna be, and for, and actually hold meetings. The other three would be excluded from that process completely. And that might piss everybody off. But politically, but we can do that.
That's Brown Act, that's, she could Brown Act.
Clarification. If the council decided to take no action tonight, other than just maybe re-agendize this item for a future council meeting, two of you could, on your own, form your own committee.
Right.
Without council action. But the two that would form your own committee would be stuck with the two, and you, no other council member could talk with you outside a public meeting about the item.
Well, as far as actions taken tonight, I mean, the council could agree that, that this is something they wanna do, and just not any specific things about it. And then two, on their own volition, can suddenly appear at the next meeting with something to show.
With, with what? What have, what have you done between this meeting and the next?
Uh, you know, meet with people, members of the community, perhaps put together some sort of drafts, no?
If you do it together, there's political issues and legal issues. If two, if you just happen to have coffee together and talk about the resolution, and then you invite fourteen people to come over, or you start meeting at different people's houses, but you're together, then you have Brown Act. That's a phrase that the council has used in the past to describe when two people on the council can meet privately together.
Sure.
And that's legal.
Right.
But you're stuck with that, that couple is stuck. They're Brown Act buddies. And privately, those two cannot then confer with any other council member about this issue.
But that's the exact same thing as an ad hoc committee.
It is. That, that's, that's the legal issue. The political issue is that if there's two or three, or if there's three people at least, I think they've indicated maybe four are in interest to be on this committee. The two that aren't part of that buddy system are excluded. That's a political issue. That's, and it's a relationship issue, and I don't know if that is a big deal or not.
All right. So as a part of tonight's agenda, can I take a poll of who is interested in being on this committee? Is that something we can talk about?
No, you could.
Well, could we agendize who would be on the ad hoc committee if we created it? Could we agendize to discuss later creating an ad hoc committee comprised of two people and say who would be on it that we're gonna vote on, on that agenda?
Knowing that we could later change our minds.
Could you agend, I guess.
So, for example, could I say, I, I make a motion that we agendize forming an ad hoc committee to draft a resolution, and that council member Cook and Hunley be on that subcommittee, and that we want that on the agenda for two weeks from now?
You, you could. That would, however, fall prey to the policy the council has followed for many years. It's the mayor who selects initially members of the committee, that that selection is then ratified by the council.
No.
Well, just to clarify, could we tonight put that in Mayor Hunley's hands, and she could actually nominate that person?
As I said, you could agendize tonight an item for the next council meeting for the creation of this subcommittee, and leave it to the mayor to make those appointments at the next meeting. They would delay this committee meeting for two weeks.
We couldn't preemptively meet?
But those two members could, could Brown Act.
What two members?
Or you, or, I guess.
So, but couldn't Mayor Hunley make the resolution? I'd make the motion I just made, and she's the mayor, and she'd be selecting it, and then we would vote on it in two weeks.
Okay. Yes?
Yeah.
And to clarify for public, the federal government doesn't have to do the Brown Act. It's just local government. That's something that should be changed.
And then with that on the pending agenda, whoever the two people were, for example, if they were Mayor Hunley and Councilmember Cook, they can speak to each other and do whatever they want prior to that meeting, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And if I want to leave this meeting with something, you know, a sense of doing something productive, can the council also pass a motion agreeing to, at a future date, approve a resolution of all the things on my item?
No, they could agendize consideration of all those things on your, on the agenda, but they could not say that they're going to approve it tonight.
Vice Mayor Edwards?
I think we did something very productive tonight, so. I'll leave it at that.
Well, I would like to make a motion to agendize the ratification of a, no.
No, the appointment, the creation of an ad hoc committee.
For nation of an ad hoc committee to discuss the resolution discussed tonight. Can I name the members?
And you'd like to agendize your, your nomination of?
I would like to agendize my nomination of Councilmember Cook and myself.
That will be agendized.
I second that. Do we have to second it?
Yes, you should. We should take, should take an action on it. Take, take a motion.
Well, that was easy, wasn't it?
All right. Any further discussion on this item?
Okay. So, but the, so the action coming back at this point is to create the subcommittee that will work on a resolution. But I thought I also heard you, Mayor, say that you would like to have it be both a resolution and to also look for other practical or other programs or areas of support. I just wanna make sure what is coming back, so that we have this agendized correctly.
Well, my thought is that if this, our committee is meeting with people from the community, and there might be good, other good ideas that are discussed, and there could be things to bring back to the council, but be, be more of, you know, proposals of, you know, other things. So is that something I need to tack on to my ad hoc description?
Well, couldn't we say that the purpose of the ad hoc committee is to draft a resolution which will be considered for approval by the council, and to bring back recommendations to the council for a vote on actions the city can take to support the immigrant community?
I would like to amend my motion to that. All right.
So does the person that seconds this ask to amend or change?
I, I accept the amended motion. All right. I think it's time for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Agamonte?
Could you explain that to me again? I'm just kidding, just kidding. I'm sorry. Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming for this. We do have one more item to discuss, hopefully quickly. Item 7D, discussion, consideration, possible action to appoint a council member and one alternate to attend the State Route 37 policy committee meetings. I turn the floor over to our city manager.
So Mayor Hunley, in, back in December 2015, the transportation agencies from Marin, Napa, Solano, and Sonoma started meeting to try to figure out how we could look for funding to do investment in Highway 37. So they've been meeting since that time. It's a little bit of a slow moving forward, but in light of the recent flooding and the issues we've been having, clearly this is affecting our economy and our community. And so the, there is a formal policy committee. They meet monthly, and the policy, the Sonoma County is represented by Supervisor David Rabbit, MTC Commissioner Jake McKenzie, and Supervisor Susan Goran. So we, as the city, city councilors, the city would not have a seat at the table. But because this issue is affecting us, it feels like there's an opportunity that if council wanted to have someone attend these meetings and be a liaison back to the council, clearly there's members in our community that are interested in this as well. So the action item before you is to consider whether appointing a council member and alternate to attend the policy committee meetings, so we stay abreast of, of the items there.
So tonight, are we appointing, or are we deciding to appoint?
You are both, you can appoint a council member and an alternate, or choose not to.
Any questions?
I just have a comment.
We'll come back. Yeah. Good question? Let me do public comment, and I'll come back. Seeing no questions, I'll take it out to the public for public comment. We have a public comment.
Chris Petlock, 426 Napa Road, Sonoma. I suffered through that commute down 37 for probably ten years. Really learned how to ride a motorcycle right down the middle, and all the way into the city. And anything that we can do to make people's lives easier as far as the 37 goes, regardless of the flooding. I think Carol, Caitlin Cornwall said to the CSCC several months ago that, you know, that whatever entity was running pumps on a constant basis just to keep the 37 open during high tide. And I think once upon a time, it was just king tide, but now it's high tide. And, and the problem's just getting worse. And of course, with the flooding we have now, I think we're just getting a sneak preview of, of what may be coming over the years, where we have all that traffic on the 37 now going down the 121, and Napa Road, and soon Highway 12. I mean, it's just coming further and further north. So, you know, I think it would be really great if we could just put two cents in and get them to do something, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Conlon here, business owner on West Napa Street. I encourage the city council to send a representative to this meeting as well. The echoing things that Chris just said, also noticing that the planning that's happening all over the Bay Area has to acknowledge the sea level rise. And that particular roadway may in fact not be defensible at the proper cost. It's effectively a bridge at this point. And we may wanna consider more systemic solutions, like moving the entire roadway north to our existing roadways. So I, I think it's gonna be a big impact on us. We need to think seriously about this, and it's important for City of Sonoma to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion and action.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agamonte.
Thank you. It's interesting, you know, I, I was just listening to the speakers. Somehow 37 has dropped off the radar. I don't see it in the newspaper. I don't hear about it on the news. Nobody's talking about it. They're talking about Coyote Creek, which is terrible. People are being displaced. San Jose, it's awful. Oroville, Los Gatos. But I wanna tell you that 44,000 people are supposed to be using this road every day. And the other things that are happening, I'm on the, thank goodness, I'm on the Transportation Authority right now, and what I understand, it's not really up the high on the list as well. I don't know how that happened. I don't know what we've done to take us off of that list. But we have a huge population that tries to get somehow through that area. And of course, now Atherton, I think, is the alternative. And I'm afraid there's gonna be a riot, because, I mean, people can't take, can't take the commuters anymore, because that's just a little road. And so all this population is traveling. So I'm learning as much as I can about this, and I would just love to volunteer for this.
Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I, I'd like to say that Madeline, since Madeline has been on transportation, she'd be good. I went to San Francisco yesterday. I was appalled. I never go to San Francisco. Had to go to the federal building. Not to deal with immigration, but it was a, it was a good meeting. But coming back, I was shocked. And somebody told me that, you know, in Iraq, when they had to get from one river to the other, they could build a bridge within a day. And this is ridiculous. And Madeline, the only thing I can say is, you know, if you are nominated, please try to tell them that there's something, maybe we don't have to do a major fix. I mean, maybe it doesn't have to be forever, but they've gotta get people back. We start talking about greenhouse gases. It's so hypocritical, what is happening with 37, that it, it's very upsetting to me. I, if I wouldn't experience it yesterday, going through the Narrows and a couple of traffic accidents, I just, I'm appalled by it. I don't see why the National Guard can't be called and just lay down some bridge and get those 44,000, plus one, 'cause I was, well, the three, I had my, my wife and my baby, so. And she's pregnant with twins, so I guess it was 44,004, so. So I'll make a motion if anybody else doesn't have a comment. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Councilmember Agamonte to the, to attend the State Route 37 policy committee meetings.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Agamonte?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Mayor Hunley?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry, Mayor Hunley, does council want an alternate? You don't have to have an alternate. I just wanted to ask the question. We put it on in case, if you wanted, so you can also fly without an alternate if you like.
But we could, or if Madeline could always reach out to us if she can't go. I mean, I'd be interested in going on occasion, perhaps, if you can't go. And I'm sure others would too. So maybe she can just find somebody.
Moving on, council members' reports and comments. Councilmember Cook?
I just wanna make a quick comment. We had the library meeting the other day, and I would, I, I wanna put on the agenda, and I've talked to the, the city manager about it, to have a presentation by the, by the library, pretty much talking about what's going on with Major Y, the, the money. There's gonna be a lot of reach out, so hopefully, hopefully that meeting will, will give the public involved, because we've gotta, we've gotta make sure that this Major Y revenue goes, you know, at a local level where we would like it. And other than that, I have a ag and open space. Thank you, Mayor Hunley, for nominating me for that. It's tomorrow night, so I will, I will miss the call day reception, but I'm sure you all have fun.
Anybody else?
I had the Sonoma County Mayor's and Councilmember Legislative Committee last Friday. I was voted vice, elected vice mayor, or vice chair. And of the, Friday was the last day for all of the legislators to submit their new bills, so there's lots of things happening. But Kathy, you have talked about the transportation bills, and I definitely, I agree that this is something that is vital to the health of our city, our roads, our budget. And it would, it's worth us taking the time to discuss writing our own letter of support for both SB 1 and AB 1.
Anybody else? Moving on to city manager comments and announcements, including announcements from successor agency staff.
Nothing, nothing tonight. Thank you.
I will take it back out to the public for the comment, I've been working for like 14 hours today. The public, for final public comment.
Ted Sexhauer, it's point of information, the 30, Highway 37 situation was in the front page of the Press Democrat today.
Good. All right. Any further public comment? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all.